Call the Menifee City Council Budget Workshop of June 14th to order. And this is a workshop. Note that all members are present. And Mr. Johnson, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This was an update for this budget cycle fiscal year 2014-15. That was presented to the Finance Committee about two weeks ago. Pretty much hasn't changed since then. Julie, could you put up the PowerPoint? And is there a clicker?
Yeah, that's all right.
What's that?
What happened?
Can someone grab that clicker for me at the podium, please? I have the first part of the presentation.
We all have the wrong binders.
Oh, Greg.
Thank you, sir.
Greg, whose do you have? Whose name is always ...
Well, Mr. ...
Here, let me have that one.
They have different numbers in them.
There we go. The only one ... You have it? There we go. All right. Everybody have their own binder? We have our right binder.
I've got a clicker so we can move forward. So, thank you. Thank you for that introduction. We like to keep this theme in front of us as we started this a couple of years ago. Establishing a solid financial foundation while prudently planning for the future is what we're attempting to do through our budget process every year. And we keep that in mind as we move forward with our project. Of course, the budget-to-team approach. We're building a comprehensive municipal budget. It takes all of our department heads and some of our administrative staff. And we are presenting a balanced budget and personnel expenses. I wanted to give a brief overview and give a big picture to the council and those that are here before I hand it off to Terry. Staff continues to do more with less. We've talked about this over and over, but what does that really mean? We have 46 full-time staff for 46 square miles. It's the lowest staff ratio in southwest Riverside County. The $4 million lost to vehicle license fee reduction that we continue to talk about is a figure that continues to rise as our population rises. A number that's used oftentimes is $50 per capita. And based on that, now at 83,716 people, that's $4,185,800 annually or 41 million over 10 years that this city is doing without currently. And I believe the mayor at some point will have an update on SB 69 for us. Those are equivalents to 16 police officer positions, constructing a brand-new fire station, or completing a project like the Newport Road resurfacing on the west side of I-215 from Honda Bradley. And that's every year. So that's not just one-time money. That's annual money that we're missing out on. And again, over a 10-year period, it gives us not a lot of flexibility in our budgets, as you'll see as we move forward. Increased sales taxes ticked currently, not bridging the gap between what we need and where we have, but we're actually keeping pace. And we'll have a slide in here that shows we're actually making inroads into our per capita based on our sales tax. It's the best opportunity to increase our revenue. As we know, restaurants, retail outlets, entertainment venues are coming. So the future looks bright. Continuing that big picture, just to give you an idea, our current population in May 1st of 2014 was at 83,716 with a full-time staffing of 46. There's some prior years with what our staffing numbers were based on our population. If you look to the box on the right of the screen, you'll see that Hemet has 81,000 and they have 289 employees for 27 square miles. Lake Elsinore has 55,000 population, 64 employees for 41 square miles. There we are at Menifee with 83,000, 46 staff, 46 square miles. Marietta has 106 population with 331 staff. Now, Hemet and Marietta are skewed because they have internal police and fire, but they're 33 square miles in Marietta. Paris is 71,000, 65 employees, and 17 square miles. Tomacula is at 105 with 149 employees and 30 square miles. So I just want to make sure that the reference to the point that we're talking about with funding that we have, the ability that we have to provide for our residents and the current staffing is by far the lowest ratio in this area. The budget that we're presenting ...
Do we have the big picture in our book?
No, you do not. That's why it's right here in front of you. But I can get you a copy after. Be happy to do that. There's no new staffing positions being requested at this time except for increases to Menifee Police Department staffing, including one new motorcycle officer and staffing hours equivalent to two new patrol officers. City staff continues to do a great job. We continue to produce a high volume of work. And as I hope you will see when you're here and you're walking around City Hall and the folks that come in, that the morale has continued to dramatically improve. Tonight, we're going to be approaching, we're going to be presenting a comprehensive municipal budget that provides and plans for the future while balancing the projects and improvements with limited staff. Much thanks to the staff. They continue to understand the difficulty of managing a heavy workload with limited assistance. We have a great team of dedicated people investing time, resources, and talent to build our community. As revenue generation continues to be a necessary key component for Menifee now and into the future, you'll see a slide in the future that shows the nearly 19 new retail sales tax generating businesses that are coming over the next 12 to 18 months. And as we discussed in the Finance Committee, Terry will be leading the charge to bring back a long-term financial plan by the end of this calendar year. Just a little revenue breakdown. We're starting to see streams in our sales tax, and it's beginning to support the enhancement of city services. You'll see on the graph to your right, we're one of the lowest around except for Wildemar. We talked several years ago about our per capita sales tax generation. It was 60 per person. Now it's 65. So we're seeing an uptick of that. We're also anticipating 19 new sales tax generators over the next 18 months. Again, we'll have a slide. Terry has one in her presentation that'll denote who those are. And the CIP program that you, council, approved last year has assisted in our traction efforts of those 19 businesses. Some of the budget highlights that Terry's going to cover. Economic development obviously is going to continue to be a major focus of this in future budget cycles. Some exciting things we've done over the last six months is we've contracted with Cosmont Companies. They're performing an auto dealership inventory and recruitment program for us as well as a hotel study that's going to show us who in particular to go after. And the neat thing and the unique relationship that Jeff Wyman, our economic development director, has created with Cosmont is that they're actually going to the manufacturers. They're not going to the local dealers around here and seeing who's expanding. They're going to the manufacturers, and they're hearing that right from the horse's mouth, so to speak. The other one is a relationship that we just formulated, really, at ICSC. And, you know, as we went last year, and several council members were there last year, and we're walking around and we see all these real estate services companies. Well, I had called a few on the way up before I got on the plane. And when I landed, we were able to meet with a couple. And what we're doing is exploring a relationship between this Voight Real Estate Services Company, which is more of a boutique firm. They're moving into Menifee, and they have an employee with them who's known Menifee for a long time. In fact, I think she's coming back to be presented a SASH award tonight. There's a disconnect between what we do and what property owners want to have happen in the city. And the way to bridge that gap is through the brokers that are in town. Now, brokers in our experience and Jeff in meeting with them and discussing with them sometimes don't want to tell us what's going on in town for the people that they're trying to recruit. And our recruiting list might not match with their recruiting list, but we think our recruiting list fits more with the economics of the community and the feedback that we get. So the idea with this relationship is to share resources with a particular company that would share their resources with us and go at this twofold. They'll help us in expanding our marketing and publicity, and also they'll assist us with who landowners are connected to what brokers are connected to who wants to develop in the community. So we think that's going to be a beneficial relationship. Again, just to highlight, no new positions are added except for police department. I'm pretty excited about that. Our initial year of capital improvement plan projects are completed in assisting and attracting our efforts. Menifee Road, Newport Road widening, getting ready to come back to council for the Bradley Bridge options. And again, we're presenting a balanced operating budget. What's not included is possible funding from Senate Bill 69, of which I showed you earlier. That's over $4 million a year now. It is moving forward to the state legislature, to the governor's desk, hopefully for consideration. And Mayor, ma'am, would you like to share the information that you learned? Or would you want to do that another time?
Let me do it right now since it flows nicely and I'll forget later. I got an update as we were coming into this meeting with this workshop on both SB 69 and Assembly Bill 1521. Assembly Bill 1521 got out of the assembly on Thursday, 22 May by a vote of 70 to 0. And it's now in the Rules Committee in the Senate. And it's the author of SB 69, Senator Roth, has a meeting with the new Speaker of the House tomorrow at 2:00 to make sure that there's no impediments in the assembly on this bill. SB 69 is a gut and amend, so it doesn't have to go through the whole regular process. So it's further along in the process than AB 1521 is. The Assembly Bill actually has to go before a Senate vote before it can get to the governor's desk. So the strategy here is to, with the authors of the bills and our lobbyists and the governor's staff, is to get both of these bills down to Governor Brown at the same time. And so with the June 15 budget deadline looming and then the legislature being out of session for the summer starting July 3rd, we're hoping that something happens between June 15th and July 3rd. But it could go into August like it did last year. And as you have already bet me, I'm the only one here that thinks that the governor will sign it this time. I know you guys don't think that, but somebody's got to remain glasses half-full.
We're all rooting for your side, Scott.
All righty. Well, and we'll take you up on that party. If he signs it, we're going to have a celebration. So that's where we're at with those two pieces of legislation to restore that number.
Thank you for that. Before I hand it over to Terry, I want to thank her and Wendy Welsh and the finance team, all the department heads we have on staff, who cheerfully and at times begrudgingly, I won't name names, assisted to make certain that we present a balanced operating budget to you tonight. My sincere thank you to the team that we have, the staff that we have, and the diligence that you've looked at in crunching your numbers. And Terry's going to get to those numbers. I know you're all excited and waiting to hear about them. But the last thing that I would just say is last year, when we were going through the budget development process, we had about a $3.5 million gap between our expenses and our revenues, which we cut down and we balanced that budget. And we brought that forward to council last year. This year, it was a little higher. As our expenses continue to rise for the amount of work that we're continuing to do, it's very important that you all understand that we're keeping expenses down to a bare minimum. And we whittled through nearly $4 million of additional requests and adds for staffing and for new programs or projects that we couldn't get to this year. And we whittled that back down to, again, present you a balanced budget. So we don't have an expense problem here. We have a revenue issue. And that revenue issue, we're banking a lot on SB 69 because I'll tell you what, it'd be a lot easier to balance our budget and to bring new projects forward and move things along quicker if we had an additional $4 million a year. As I mentioned, that's 16 police officers right there. That's moving forward with a brand-new fire station. That's getting a lot of our PMP work done on our roads. So just keep that in mind as we go through the numbers. I'm going to hand it over to you, Terry, and let your finance director bring you the numbers of your budget. Thank you.
And one thing I'd like to add about Senate Bill 69 and the loss of the VLF funding, it's not just money for the new cities that we need. It's an equity issue. It's money other cities get that we don't get, yet we're expected to provide the same services as other cities. It's just something to keep in mind.
The governor needs to keep that in mind.
I agree. Tonight, I'm going to be providing an overview of the budget, revenues versus expenditures, fiscal year 2014, sources of revenue, expenditures by type as well as by department. I'll be going over major differences from last fiscal year adopted budget, staffing overview by department, capital requests, and ending fund balance projection, summary of other funds outside the general fund, as well as a summary of the capital improvement program. So with that, I'll get into the numbers. Budget purpose, it's a financial plan of expenditures. Council sets goals and policies. We allocate resources to follow and meet these goals as set by council. Budget also provides a management tool for staff to carry out council policy. A budget is an annual financial plan that identifies revenues, types, and levels of services to be provided, and the amount of funds that can be spent. A balanced budget, as defined in our budget policy, is a budget in which planned operating expenditures do not exceed operating revenues. And a fund, which you'll hear a lot of discussion about tonight, that is merely an independent fiscal and accounting entity. We can't mix money in between different funds. An example of your tax dollars at work, for every $1 candy bar sold within the city of Menifee, the city of Menifee would receive a penny of the sales tax. If 32 million candy bars were sold this year within the city of Menifee, that would give us enough money to purchase a fire engine if it cost $320,000.
Sell it to the kids at school.
Lots of candy bars. This is a breakdown of a property tax dollar. And you can see, this is a representation of $1 of property tax. Only 12 cents goes to the city of Menifee, 6 cents for general property taxes, and 6 cents for the Menifee Fire Protection District. 24 cents out of every property tax dollar goes to the county and various agencies. 48 cents goes to various school agencies, and the rest goes to other entities such as Eastern Municipal Water Districts. So the city really gets a very small portion of each property tax dollar. Budget overview, we have revenue, which is like a deposit you'd make to your checking account. Expenditures are like checks we all write. When revenues and expenditures are equal, this equals a balanced budget. So the like of the balance in your checking account. You have extra money, you might transfer that into your savings account. Our city savings account is our reserve fund. That's the money we save. An overview of our budget process, which goes on all year. We begin in February. We look at performance measures. What we, in the budget, you'll find goals and objectives from each department, so we assess those mid-year. I also bring back typically in February the status of the city as of that mid-year point and report to council. In March, we set our budget priorities. We also have an internal budget kickoff meeting where we go over these priorities with each department. In April, our budget development phase, we work with the departments. They prepare their budgets. We meet with departments to go over those requests and budgets. In May, we look at the CIP and fixed assets. We also prepare the proposed budget, and then we present that to the Finance Committee. Budget adoption occurs in June where we have one or more budget workshops, and then it's finally adopted at a public council meeting. Budget management occurs all year long. We work with departments to constantly monitor our budget versus actual expenditures, look at what projects may be coming up and how that's going to affect the budget, as well as look at revenues versus actual projections. A breakdown of our city budget, 61% of all the budget is made up of the city's general fund. 10% is the development impact fees. 5% gas tax and community service areas are both 5%. And the 19% is made up by various other funds. The four pillars of this year's budget, no tax increases. We're building our reserves. No added staff positions. And increasing public safety services as directed by council and Public Safety Committee.
Terry, we're all familiar on the federal level office of management and budget that is every time that a department comes out and says, "We've got to have X amount of money or we can't function." They go in and figure out where they're going to chop it even more. How does that work in our city? Is that through the process that you referred where we go through the budget process, the council, et cetera? Or is it the city manager? Or is it you? Who pays, who plays that bad cop who goes to each department head and says, "Hey, wait a minute, guys. You can cut this just a little more."
That would be a team effort. We work with, city manager and I both work through the budget process to look at those requests. And if the budget's not balanced, then we do have to go back and work with the departments. And I guess we're the bad cops.
That's a good answer, Rob. Okay, thank you.
So in summary, the city of Menifee is fiscally sound. We are presenting a balanced operating budget despite the loss of VLF revenues. We have growth in other revenues in areas such as development fees. We're spending very prudently, making careful financial decisions, and expanding services based on council direction and as resources allow. And again, as the theme, we are doing more with less. General fund budget does not include vehicle license revenue lost due to the passage of Senate Bill 89 in fiscal year 1112. It is a balanced operating budget with continued emphasis on enhancing service levels. We have added funding for one motor officer and patrol hours equal to two deputies. That's included in this budget being presented today. Also includes community service budget, which includes funding for key city events, city birthday celebration, Independence Day, and Veterans Five Gay, for example. Also, per previous council direction, the proposed budget does include a line item for Boys and Girls Club sponsorship. The next slide represents actual revenue from fiscal year 1213. You can see it was very heavily relying on property and sales tax. 63% of the revenues at that time came from property and sales tax with only 12% from building and planning development fees. In comparison for fiscal year 14, we are more diversified. We're relying on 37, projecting 37% of the general fund revenue to come from property tax, 21% from sales tax, and 21% from building and planning fees and engineering fees. The next slide shows the growth of revenue for tax revenue for property and sales tax. You can see fiscal year 1112, the growth through what we're proposing for fiscal year 1415. So we are seeing good increases in both property and sales tax. General fund operating expenditures, 27.6 million. 37% is police. 26% or 7.3 million, fire. The administration departments include city manager, city clerk, finance, city attorney make up 14%. Public works, engineering, 9%. Building and safety, 5%. Community development, 4%. And community services and economic development, 2%. And city council, 1%. Expenditures by type and category, 19% of the general fund budget is salary and benefits. 80% is supplies and services. This includes contracts with this, including the police and fire contracts in this category. Expenditures by department, you can see the bulk of the general fund expenditures of public safety. The 63% is police and fire. So that is the majority of the general fund budget. Personnel for fiscal year 1415, no new positions are being requested at this time. 46 full-time positions. However, one code enforcement officer, one, is unfunded at this time in the budget presented this evening. Some of the changes from last year's adopted budget to this year, we do have increased funding available from development fee revenue due to the increase in activity, which we've discussed many times during the mid-year budget review. It's an increase of over 150% from fiscal year 1314 adopted budget at the same time last year. Likewise, we have expenditures in development departments such as planning, building, and engineering, which have increased accordingly due to the increased activity and demand. The police budget has increased 1.4 million or 15% from the prior year due to a combination of a contract rate increase of 7% as well as the new personnel that were added. General fund and capital one-time requests, these are things that are like items you might not just write a check for. You would look to pay these out of your savings account. Similarly, we're looking to pay these out of our savings account. Total of 256,000 in one-time capital, one-time expenditures and capital requests. The bulk of this is related to costs for the new personnel, 126,000, actually almost 127,000 for training for the new officers as well as outfitting the motorcycle for the new motor officer, 52,000. In summary, we have estimated revenues of 27.6 million. Operating expenditures, 27.4. Transfers out of 147,000. So we have an operating surplus of $6,228. Our projected fund balance for the general fund for next fiscal year, I project that we will end 1415 with a balance of 7.8 million. Our operating expenditures, as previously identified, are 27.6. So the fund balance percentage as compared to the operating expenditures is 28%. And what is required by our city's fund balance policy is 25%. So we are in compliance with the city's fund balance policy. Moving on to some of the other funds outside the general fund, we have several other types. Special revenue funds, which are used to account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources. And those are restricted funds that can only be spent on certain things. Examples of that are gas tax, Measure A, community development block grants. We can't spend those on, other than what they're identified for. Capital project funds are used to account for the financial resources for the acquisition and construction of major capital facilities. We have funds such as the Menifee Valley and Scott Road Bridge and Benefit Districts and the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee or TUMF Fund. We have one debt service fund. This is used to track revenues and expenditures related to the repayment of principal and interest. And in this case, it's related to the total road improvement program financing that was approved by council in May 2012. In summary, the other funds will have, I project, a beginning fund balance, July 1st, 2014, of 15.8 million. Revenue and revenues for the various funds will be 12 million. Expenditures, 13.5 million. And some of those are projects that are carried over where we receive revenue and you're just spending it this year. So it's spending previously received revenue. Ending fund balance is projected for those other funds for 14.4 million. The capital improvement program, this is the second year of the five-year CIP that was adopted last year. Major projects expected to be the Bradley Road Bridge, continuation of the pavement management program, Newport Road Interchange, Newport Road West, Encanto reconstruction, this is a payment to the county for the Leon Road Project, park improvements of 550,000, and beginning work on relocation and construction of the Sun City Fire Station for 800,000. So total capital improvement program of 5.6 million for fiscal year 201415. Our action plan for next year, recovery is underway. Maintain a prudent spending plan. We're expanding only as resources allow. We're looking to increase existing revenue sources through developing sales tax outlets. Also, to develop additional revenue sources to increase the diversity of revenue, so we're not relying on one certain type of revenue as much. And we're going, plan on continuing the vigorous economic development plan as directed by As mentioned by city manager Johnson, this is, slide depicts many of the businesses that will be coming to Menifee within the next year or so. You can see there's plenty of great opportunities that will bring revenue to the city. So in conclusion, there is no action needed on the budget at this time. The budget will be presented for adoption at the city council meeting on June 18th, 2014. The draft budget is already on the city's website, and there are, I believe there's some paper copies here available for the public. And there's council direction aside of wishing the modifications to the proposed budget. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Willoughby. Counsel? Mr. Edgerton?
First off, Terry, thanks for a great presentation. Just to follow up, you spoke with the 214, 215 capital improvements. And I don't know, maybe Jonathan can help on this again. I like to continually be reminded, where are we precisely on the Holland Overpass improvement?
Okay.
Currently, that's under design. We have TY Lynn is the design engineer. And I can have a schedule of where we are on the design, when we think we're under construction, and my next update.
By when?
My next update, which tonight, if you would like it.
Okay.
And just for council's and the public, in the back of the budget book, there are project pages for each capital improvement program that show which year that those are expected to come. So it's five years.
Yeah.
Could you go back to the big picture summary slide that talks about the size of our city staff in comparison to our population and as it compares to other surrounding cities? our city staff in comparison to our population and as it compares to other surrounding cities?
Certainly.
And I would like to echo what deputy mayor said. Great job. Thank you for keeping us balanced. Thank you for taking a slow growth approach. As revenues increase, service things will be added. This slide for me is really a telltale sign. I mean, we're a unique, we're in a unique position, just like Wildamar and Eastvale and Harupa Valley are. But this slide really shows and demonstrates that, contrary to some previous commenters at other council meetings, the city of Menifee is not in an empire building scenario with staff. So I just wanted to reiterate that. That's a really telling slide when you look at the other cities that surround us and how long they've been in existence, and frankly, what we've been able to do despite the fact that SB eighty-nine took away our VLF revenue. So from my perspective, thank you all very much for following the budget process and bringing us a great workshop and another balanced budget. And we're keeping our reserves intact.
Correct.
Question. You went by so fast. Actually, I understood the first two slides this year, so I'm improving. And it was, that was a nice presentation, the big picture, as I like to call it. But anyway, you went by kind of fast. The budget's thirteen forty compared to fourteen and fifty. And I, I didn't catch up with the, the ratio, the relationship. Are we, are our sales taxes, sales taxes in relationship to property taxes growing and becoming a bigger part rather than a smaller part of the entire city revenue package?
Property tax and sales tax is actually a smaller part this year than it has been in the past, which is a good thing. We're not as relying on that, which have swings.
Excuse me, just a moment. Who, who is using their phone? Oh, is that yours? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought somebody was, I didn't mean to, I thought somebody was texting. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Terry. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Actually, property and sales tax is a smaller part of our general fund budget in fourteen fifteen than it has been in prior years. We have other sources of revenue to diversify those revenue sources.
Would that be because of the commercial activity and the fees that commercial, the people are paying and consistent with our cost recovery of our fee schedule partially?
We do have an increase in development fees, which is due primarily to an increase in activity. We've seen over, I think, one-hundred-and-twenty percent, if you compare one year to the next, in building permits. But the fee study was a part of it too. So we are seeing, and other revenue sources are increasing as well as like, some of our licensing activity. We're licensing more businesses now. So that revenue source is growing.
Franchise fees.
Franchise fees are growing, correct.
Mr. Edgerton?
Franchise fees in particular are growing. As, we get more residents, those fees will continue to grow up because they're per household. Yes.
Terry, as everybody knows, if, if we're looking for somebody's net worth, we would say, well, okay, we're going to subtract their house and all their other liabilities and then come up with their net worth assets, roughly. I look at property tax and, and I see the thirty-seven percent income. Do we, is there any way that we can figure where property taxes are a net revenue as opposed to certain properties because of the service demands are a negative? In other words, if I look at the thirty-seven percent, I'm assuming that that is the pot.
That's all property tax, correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Furman?
Terry, you had, I noticed half a million dollars in there for parks. Would, would that, would that include open space and trails and everything? Would that be like a, an estimated budget that our new committee could recommend spending?
I'll let Mr. Lennox speak to that. He can, that's.
Mr. Lennox?
Sure, that five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is intended to be used for capital improvements in parks and trails. It's a combination of both.
All right, thank you.
Another question. Could you go back to the property tax, sales tax slide, please, Terry?
Sure.
It's anyone's fine. Was it thirty-seven to twenty-one? Was it thirty-seven?
Pie chart, pie chart slide.
That's right. It's the only one I can understand.
Oh, bet.
There you go.
Okay. This, this was actual revenue collected fiscal year twelve thirteen.
And then you can go to the new one, the projected one? That's thirty-seven twenty-one. I got a question, and maybe the city manager can chime in on this one. Being the accountant you are and with the experience Mr. Rich Johnson has in these types of areas, what would be an ideal relationship, percentage of business to, business, sales tax to property tax?
Well, I can just share for you what some of the other cities around us have. If you look down as far as Temecula, which is really a full-service city without police and fire, talking about an auto dealership and a promenade mall, I believe their, their property tax, their sales tax is higher than property tax, bringing about twenty-five million in, in sales tax. So I would like to see it equal or greater than on the sales tax side. Because the, the people that are here, you want spending money here. So if, if the people that are here don't have the ability to spend money here, they're going to spend it in other cities, which make other cities' police, fire, public works, and code enforcement and safety increase on the backs of the cities that are around them, or the population that's around them. We, we've done several studies. We've got a four-hundred-and-twenty million dollar leakage of, of sales tax revenue annually. We know that there's seven-hundred-thousand people in our trade area. We've been using that information to increase our sales tax per capita, which you see on this slide here, from sixty dollars a person to sixty-five. Basically, what that says is, it's this, your sales tax revenue figure divided by your population gives you that total dollar amount per person. That means everyone in Menifee, eighty-three thousand seven hundred and twelve, I think is our population number, spends sixty-five dollars a year in Menifee. That's low. If you look over at Temecula, it's two-hundred, if you could hover over that, do you have a, do you have your mouse, Terry?
It's about two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars per, right?
I don't know, do that.
It's not showing up. But yes, it's about two-hundred, I think it's two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars a person. And we're at sixty-five. So when you have people that are here, that are living here, if that's true community development, if you're, if you're providing the, the benefits to living here, that people don't have to drive out of the city to purchase, that's where your per capita income goes. That's where you add your police. That's where you add your, public works and, and streets and roads projects, and, and so people can move around town. And you keep your dollars local. What, what we're experiencing and what we've been experiencing over the last couple of years is the fact that we've had a population increase. And that is greater than the sales tax and property tax increase. And then the calls for service for police and fire have increased, but they've increased more and greater and faster because the population's increased than the sales and, and property tax. So to spin that around, we need more sales tax opportunities in the city, which are coming. We've got nineteen, we had a great slide about nineteen new ones coming. And they're, and they're, and they're good ones. They're not just little boutique shops or places that people will want to, to stay and shop and, and actually get essential needs from. That's kind of the crux that, that we're in. So to the extent that we can keep our sales tax dollars local and make that match what the property tax is as a starter, we always want that to increase above what the property tax is, always. I don't have an exact number.
Yeah, piggybacking on the city manager, again, what would be interesting in the pie chart is if, and, and you can't come up with the exact figures here, but what would be interesting is an approximation of the net revenue coming in from property tax and the net revenue coming in from sales tax. And I mean, in other words, our revenues minus our service costs. And that would, I think, be an eye-opener as far as how we wanted to manage our property taxes and how we wanted to approach them and deal with them. I'm going to guess that the revenues from sales tax are, are pretty close to what comes in. I mean, there's a service charge, but it's not going to be anything like the service charge against the property, I wouldn't think. See, but that, I don't know.
I can certainly provide at the budget council meeting a chart that shows police and fire costs as compared to property and sales tax, if that would be helpful.
Well, if we could, if we could, at some point, see that on a pie chart, yeah, no, I, I mean, you know, you can talk to the state treasurer and say, well, how much is California worth a day? He couldn't tell you. Any more than you could give an, an exact answer on, on a net return for property tax and a net return for sales tax. But it would be interesting if we could come up with an approximation. That would be, maybe that would be difficult, but I would think you could maybe get a ballpark figure.
Mr. Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Deputy mayor, I can give you a ballpark of that right now, top of my head. And then we can research the exact numbers. Police about ten million dollar contract, fires about seven million. So we're looking at seventeen million there in expenses. I believe that property tax is around nine million. And our sales tax figure is just under six. So that's fifteen million there. So property and sales tax are not, are not paying the share of police and fire. So that's why we have to go out and, and have people spend their money here and have places for them to do it. So the commercial retail side, which then drives the ability to bring businesses in, they're going to provide jobs and careers for folks, other than what we have here, that, that whole life cycle is, we're, we're right smack dab in the middle of it. So that'll give you just a little bit, but we'll, we'll clean those figures up and bring them back.
Thanks. Could you email us a copy of this slide presentation?
Sure. Would you like to have it on the city website as well?
Sure, for the public, you bet. Yeah, absolutely. Counsel, are there any other questions or comments of staff for this budget workshop? Hearing none. This budget workshop, Mr. Johnson, before we close out, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, well done, team. Madam Clerk?
I don't have speaker slips, but they could, someone could speak if they wished at this time. However, I just wanted to.
Are there any speaker? Are there any speakers? Oh, okay. Well, it was kind of late. All right. This workshop is adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Council member August, council member Furman, I'll note that he's here, council member Denver, deputy mayor Edgerton, and mayor man.
Here. And this evening, we have words of inspiration by Pastor Cameron Stevens of Generations Church. Mr. Mayor, thank you for inviting us out this evening. And members of the council appreciate you having us here. Would you join me in a word of prayer? Heavenly Father, we come before you this, this evening, Lord, and thank you for the opportunities, Lord, that you place before us each and every day. Father, I'm especially grateful for the men and women who sit on this council and just pray a special blessing upon them in the proceedings this evening. Lord, we dedicate all that we do to you as our nation, counties, cities, states, Lord God, and, and all the matters that take place. We think of you in all things. We stand upon your word, Father God, for inspiration, for encouragement, Lord, and a place to go to when we need assistance and we need help. Father God, for right now, we ask your assistance and your presence, Father God, on these proceedings tonight. Lord, that your presence here would guide and direct the conversations as we talk about things pertinent to the workings in and out of this city. Lord, and I thank you for the opportunity. Thank you again for the men and women who sit on this council and all those present tonight. Lord, may you bless them and be with them this evening. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you very much. And council member Furman, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the mercy and justice of all.
Thank you very much. And tonight, we have some presentations to make. You may see some guests in the audience wearing some colorful garb. And if you would join me up front, we will make those presentations.
Oh, is this something? I can do it from here. Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Tonight, we have, we have some very special guests. Similar in fashion to what we did last year, we have some beauty pageant winners amongst us tonight. And we have a group of outgoing reigning champions. And then we have an incoming court. And at this point, I would like to hand it over to Ann Bowman to give a few remarks about the organization.
Thank you, Mayor Man and city council members. Southwest California Pageants has been doing the city pageant for Menifee since right after the city incorporated. And so the young ladies that participate in this scholarship pageant are all residents here in Menifee. And they are out and about for everything from ribbon cuttings and grand openings, they help at chamber of commerce functions, and just support this community in, in every way that they can in representing their, their young peers here in the city of Menifee. So we recently had a pageant. And so the young ladies who served last year, the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen year, they have just crowned their successors. But these young ladies on the court, if they can come up, these young ladies have been the ones that have been out and about for this past year. And we really appreciate the city council allowing us to come and recognizing them for their efforts and what they do. So if the twenty thirteen court, the city of Menifee court, and also our Ms. and Mrs. Menifee Valley Chamber court members, if you will all come on up to the front, there are some certificates that the mayor will be presenting.
Come on up, ladies, and just file right on in here. And how old are you? Five, wow. Keep coming down. So we have a certificate to present each one of you on behalf of the city. And I'll read one, and then we'll just pass them on down. City of Menifee Certificate of Appreciation, this certificate awarded to each one of you, Miss City of Menifee twenty thirteen on June fourth, twenty fourteen, signed by your city council. And our first, first certificate goes to Annie Galloway. Thank you very much. And Gwendolyn Carney. And we have Haley, Ms. Haley Jackson. Play volleyball or basketball too? You should. And we have Malin Martin. Did I pronounce it right? Educate me. Martin, thank you very much. All right, it's a pretty name. And Ms. Madison Montero. And we have Rihanna Bach. How old are you, young lady? Six? Eight years old, and you go to South Shore Elementary. Congratulations to you, young lady. Karina Sakonas. You're five. Where do you go to school? You go to South Shore also. All right. Congratulations. Yvette Barnett. Kathleen Sanders. Congratulations. And we have Sheila Caruso. And we have, last but not least, Ms. Linda, or is it Dr. Linda Overt? I can never remember. Not, not doctor, but at least the, in a, in a. Not, not doctor, but at least an, an award-winning beauty queen, to be sure. Congratulations. And can we have one, one more picture with this group, with the council? Did you get one, Gina?
I'd like one more.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. It's, uh...
Another round of applause for your 2013 work. Congratulations, ladies. Grab yourself a pin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
What, are we staying up here?
Um, no, actually, we wanted, we invited our new court, the 2014...
Come up at the same time.
Um, to come up and get their pins that they can wear on their sashes. So, these ladies are just starting their year, and they will be out and about in the community, so if our 2014 court can come on up...
Come on, ladies, just, I'll, I'll file right through here. You can stay back there. Oh, you're a new one, too? You're back and getting a pin? Right here, honey. Karina, right here. Okay. And did you each one get a pin?
Thanks, sir. So, we have our Ms. and our Mrs. Menifee Valley Chamber, and our city court, four, one court, two... So, look for them out in the community, and we'll see you this year.
Congratulations, Ms. Bowman. Well done, ladies. Thank you all very much for coming and participating. Have a great, great year, and good evening. All right, thank you, everybody, for your participation, and we are on to agenda approval or modification, oh, excuse me, approval of meeting minutes of May 21st. Are there any modifications to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, Agenda Item 7, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Your Honor. Item, sorry, Your Honor, 12.4 is being removed from tonight's agenda. We will return that at a later date.
Very well. Uh, Item 12.4 is removed from tonight's agenda.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, do we have any other adjustments to make?
No, sir.
On the consent calendar here.
Yeah, we'll pull those off as we, we'll get it.
Pardon?
We'll pull those off when we get it.
Yeah.
Hearing no additional modifications, the agenda is approved. On to public comments. Madam Clerk, would you call the first commenter?
Yes, Your Honor.
Gosh, now I get Tom billing. How ironic, we have our mayor working on a budget when he can't even handle his own finances, as we all know and I've talked about before. Once again, tonight, I have to address the lies told by our mayor. He's touting that there will be three new police officers in the city. I'd like to ask when their boots will hit the ground.
About 18 months.
Well, just in time, so you look good for election time, that you've got three new officers on the ground, but they don't start for 18 months.
That's the recruitment process, ma'am, so you can talk to Captain Judge about that, and he'll fill you in on the particulars of how that recruitment process works. So, please continue.
Thank you. I volunteered for 15 years with the sheriff's department, so I don't think I need to talk to our captain. I had to call for the police recently, as a home near me was broken into. I was watching it for an owner. When I was called to see what had happened, I found the front security door, and the inside door had been unlocked. So, I was not sure if someone was still in this residence. I called the sheriff. About two hours later, I called the sheriff again. I was told that they handle things that are in process at the moment. Well, when I went to open that door, I didn't know if there was somebody in there and there was something in the process. Five and a half hours later, an officer showed up. I was the last call on that shift of the day. He told me I was the last call because they were working on these calls in progress. Well, mine could have been a case in process if there'd been someone in that house, but five and a half hours later, of course, there was nobody around. Another lie seems to be circulating, that you were in negotiations with Stater Brothers to bring them to Menifee, to Newport and Menifee Road. Seems to me that commercial realtors are the ones that do negotiations with companies to bring them to the city and not our mayor. I know you make lots of backdoor deals, but that is not how good business is done. I hope at election time, the people of this city see what you for what you are and cast their vote in favor of someone with ethics and moral character. That and honesty seem to be missing in this city. Anytime you can hire 13 new employees for the money they are being paid, and our police force is being cut short of staff, there is something seriously wrong. Crime is up in this city an astronomical amount, and yet we have four officers on a I think that's criminal. I think something needs to be done sooner than 18 months.
Next speaker, please.
At the last meeting, the mayor said he wished that Katie Manier had stuck around because he wanted Rob Johnson to prove her statements wrong. She was absolutely correct on her statement and what you have said. You said the loss of the money from the vehicle license fees that the governor took from the city was the reason we cannot afford to increase the police force. Not only have you stated that once, but many times. I'm holding your campaign hanger, and on it it states, "I will work with the county to increase law enforcement services and use our reserve officer force to reduce costs." What reserve officer force? These are the facts, Mr. Mann. Menifee homicide rate is up 200 percent, forcible rape up 50 percent, aggravated assault up 19 percent, and arson up 300, according to the sheriff's report of Menifee crime. Why would you hire one more motorcycle officer to hand out tickets? We need more police patrols in our city, and that money can and should be found or taken out of the general fund. Your number-one priority should be the protection of the citizens of Menifee. On fiscal responsibility, you claim, "I will achieve a balanced budget, oppose deficit spending, and increase the city's reserves." Since you have been in office, we have been working with a deficit budget. You have not achieved a balanced budget, as you claimed you would. You have not reduced the property tax burden for homeowners, as you claimed. You have allowed the city manager to be hostile to home business owners in this city, demanding exorbitant amounts of money to be paid to the city if people want to keep their business in Menifee. I call that extortion. You have made many promises prior to getting elected and have failed to keep any of those promises to the people of Menifee. I think you need a new scriptwriter on your next run for mayor. Your next campaign slogan should be, "Promises made by Mayor Mann are promises broken once reelected." The mayor claims no money to increase the police force, but had no problem funding over $750,000 taxpayer dollars for new hire, thousands of dollars wasted by taking down street signs in Sun City area and placing them with Menifee logo on dark brown street signs that are difficult to read. You don't have any problem using the taxpayers' dollars in playing political games on your personal vendetta by spending $300,000 in attorney fees to go after the Wood and Nickel Ranch owned by Tom Furman. Now, the mayor wants pay hike of 100 a month, not representing the people, and poor performance does not warrant a raise. It's disgraceful what is going on in this city. We need a serious investigation into what is going on in this city. And I'm going to give this to the city clerk to record, because she seems to have lost her memory every time it comes to the minutes on what I have to say.
Next speaker, please.
Eric Brown.
Good evening. I'm actually here just to pose questions to the city manager and other people. As you know, I spoke on the paintball park that was attempted to be built, and I've heard that there is actually a meeting that's going to be in place. I've been in contact with the owners, and as it turns out, according to them, I have yet to see the messages. I asked if I could view them, but I actually just heard about it tonight. Jungle Island, the paintball park that is in Lake Elsinore, has been calling the city as well as calling the owners and messaging the owners, saying that they shouldn't do it, trying to discourage them, because frankly, from what it sounds like, they're scared that they'll lose business. And, I mean, after hearing that, it's, it's pretty obvious that we, we need this park to be built, so I'm just saying this to, uh, Mr. Johnson and to anyone else who may be, uh, it may be in regards to. Again, I speak for almost everyone that I know who is under the age of 25. We would kill for a paintball park. We would pay out like crazy for it, and, I mean, it's walking distance. We are ecstatic about it. And, um, we don't care if we have to raise the money by selling lemonade on the corners, we'll do it. The people, I've gone to high schools, I've spoke to many of the kids around here, they are clamoring for a paintball park. They absolutely support the idea 100 percent, and really, it would be a great reflection of the city council, that if we could just push this through, work with them. Um, I know before I was a little more hostile, but I figured I'd try and be the nice guy. I, uh, I think if we worked with them, you'd see a big response from the youth in that it would help bring the crime rate down, because nothing is worse to a crime rate than bored kids. There, once again, there's nothing here, and it's desperate need for it. And I know that the high schools around here, I mean, it'd be down the street from Paloma, it'd be great for it to work with. The students are absolutely adored for it, and, um, like I said, it'd be a great reflection that you guys are, you don't forget about the youth that we are in fact here, and I would really, really appreciate it if you can take a really close look at the, the park. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Johnson, can, can you confer, I believe you have a meeting with the owners at some point in the near future, right?
I have a meeting with, uh, Mr. Christopher Saunders, who's the prospective client for that.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Richard Melrose.
Hi, I'm Richard Melrose, Quail Valley Community Group, and I just wanted to thank the mayor, the council, Planning Commission, I don't know if code's here, but, and law enforcement, whoever was in on getting the marijuana dispensary closed down in Quail Valley, uh, didn't mess around for sure. They opened the Saturday before the last council meeting, and they were closed down the day after the council meeting, which was like four days. So, I just wanted to thank you, for myself personally, and from Quail Valley Community Group, that you guys really jumped on it and got that taken care of, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Richard. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to voice my opinion for the new skate park that recently opened up, how there's no bikes allowed. Um, I heard, I talked to a few people...
Could you speak, pull the mic closer to you, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah, just pull down, there you go.
Is that good?
Yeah.
All right, um, I was here to talk about how the new Menifee skate park, how there's no bikes allowed, and I talked to a few people. It sounds like an insurance thing, like bikes are more massive, more dangerous when they slam into you, another skateboarder or scooter kid. And since that was the case, I was suggesting that we have a different days for skateboarders and scooter kids together, and BMX, so that way, no BMX riders crash into any other skateboarders causing damage, and it gives everyone a chance to do what they want to do and have fun, because that's all we're mainly trying to do, is just have fun, do what we like to do, and just have a good time. And I would highly appreciate it if you guys take that in consideration, to allow bikes, because there's lots of BMX riders here that are like upset that we're not allowed here at their own local skate park, when we have to go to another, another city and pay for another skate park, or we have to go to schools, and then we'll get kicked out of the schools, and then they tell us, "Go ride skate parks," and then once they finally build a skate park for us, we're not allowed to ride it. And so, that gives us like nowhere to ride, or have nothing to do. And we have like, we could build dirt jumps, but that's only for certain people, they like that, but sometimes when we build them, certain places, they get torn down, like plowed, and then spends like hours and hours trying to build, and... That'll be it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr., thank you for coming and sharing that with us. Mr. Denver?
Um, you brought that to me at the opening of the, this park.
Yeah.
And I passed it along to both the owner of the subdivision and the city. I'm not going to say it's in the works, but it's all being looked at. The, there's 10 answers being thought about, one of them being opening a whole nother park specifically for bicycles. Uh, it's, it's a problem. You, you have it figured out, it's an insurance thing. It has, uh, kids walking around, and the bicycles, it's, it's a problem. So, they're working on it, uh, no promises, but you're not being ignored.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
How would I say?
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor, council members, staff. I often get up here and sound like a gadfly. I, I realize that. My mission is not to do that, my mission is to expose the wrongdoing. The city does a lot of good work for the community. One problem that we have, that we've had for quite a while, is our planning directors. They, they seem to think that they're working in a community like Berkeley, or San Francisco, or a community like that, not a conservative community mostly, like ours. I saw something very disturbing at the last, um, Planning Commission. Rob, this is mostly for your ears. We had put, not we, but yeah, the, the community had put together an amendment on an ordinance. That amendment was, that ordinance amendment was hidden from the camp, the, the Planning Commission, okay? By this man to my right, Charles Leclerc. He did it intentionally because he didn't like that ordinance change or proposal. Not one of the planning commissioners knew about this amendment. You know what I'm talking about, Rob. You helped put it through. He stymied that. This gentleman right here stymied that. He kept the Planning Commission from considering it and/or voting on it, okay? This is a corruption of our process. It is basically the same problem that we had with the last Planning Commissioner, Carmen Cave. This is the reason that Carmen Cave was asked to leave, because she circumvented the system, much like you were doing, Mr. Leclerc. It is not his place to figure out what he wants to do, but what this community is asking of our staff and council. I asked that you reprimand this man, write him up, and stick that reprimand in a file. It needs to be done, or better yet, fire him, because he is out of bounds, and this is not the first time that he has circumvented the process. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? Did you have something to share? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Those are all the public commenters under public comment items.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to council member updates and comments. Do we have any updates? Mr. August?
I want to, I want to ask the chair if I could take the liberty of doing something I'll probably do at the end of the meeting, but at the end of the meeting, there probably won't be anybody out there, so I'd like to, uh, address this point now, since the press is here. Most of you are all aware that we had a vandalism incident out at Audi Murphy Park in, in the skate park a week ago. It was in the papers, it was considerable damage, it was graffiti that was rather, um, well, we can't repeat it right now. But anyway, I've talked to several people on the staff and a couple of people on the council, and I'm, I'm not, I think we should be reactive on this, and what I've asked Rob Johnson to do is to put together a, a program, or, um, that would offer an award, reward for these people, maybe, so we can track them down for the arrest and conviction of these people, maybe turn it into community public service, perhaps send the pictures to all the schools and the principals to try to find the people that violated that skate park, and they... skate park. And I, I think they did it within a period of two days if I'm not mistaken. So I would like to ask Mr. Johnson if, if he's made any progress on that and especially for maybe offering a small reward for the, for the apprehension or the conviction finding those people.
Thank you for that. Yes, we've talked about that in the office. I can tell you that I believe I found out today from Captain Judge, there was an arrest and their person's in custody or was put through the process. But if I can get consensus from the rest of our council members here on offering a reward of $500 for the capture and conviction of, of those, we'll be happy to do that. I didn't want to do that at the request of a council member, not in a public forum. So if I can have the consensus of the rest of the council, we'll definitely put that out. And the next time it happens, we'll blanket as much information as we can in the community and we'll offer that reward.
Do we have a consensus?
Is there, is there, is there any objection? Hearing nuns, make it, make it so. Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, $500 reward, the kid ought to consider himself lucky. We've had in the news some people that have been caught in Asia marking up cars and they get publicly flogged. So we probably are not going to do that, but we don't want to let them know that. There's something on the agenda here which talks about consideration of minimum lot size and we're going to push it forward to July or August. I, I want to bring that forward with a permission of a second and I'll do that at the proper time. But I don't want to bring it forward for a vote or consternation. We just went through a budget. We're talking about revenue, how to generate revenue. It's a very complex issue and that's really where I was coming from on that. I want to just have a brief discussion. I don't want to lay any big omnibus challenge to staff or have any differences with the council. I've been in discussions with the Eastern Municipal Water District, Mr. Ron Sullivan. And he said after exhaustive studies and research, they cannot find any nexus between ticky tack and size of lots. And I found that that's true. And so I'm going to subtract that from my lexicon and talk about small lots. And, and if I've ever inferred that people who live in small lots are a problem, I would hope that can, has never been a consideration. After we, my wife and I sold our house in Long Beach, we lived in a house that was 800 square feet with a tiny little lot with five foot setbacks. And the only thing it had in the back was a pool, which my dog, our Labrador, loved. And so the three of us really enjoyed that property while we were there before we came out and bought our two and a half acres. But I, I will at a later date, talk about moving that forward for discussion purposes only. I want to flesh it out a little bit. I think minimum lot size is something to discuss, but it's a very complex issue and I think eventually we would probably move toward a workshop where we can have more light than sound. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Denver?
I have, thank you, Mayor. I have several things. Recently, we had Menifee Motor Madness, which was quite an event. The Rotary Club, there's over 100 cars shown. My car was there and didn't win a thing and, but I got it cleaned, so now I have a very clean race car. The, we had live entertainment there. It was a great time. The chamber installation dinner was the other night. I'm sure the mayor will, I hope will talk more about it or, it was a wonderful event and we gave awards to the police and to the fire. It's already been mentioned and damaged already, the Audi Murphy Park opening. What a great addition that is to Menifee. Just before that, the Drop Zone Park was opened. I got to speak at that. It's in, technically it's in Paris, but those of us who think of Romaland, we, that, it was really, it's right there by Romaland. What a wonderful place that is. It has enough, a swimming pool, really two swimming pools side by side. And it has a, just all kinds of wonderful things. It's the best water park in Riverside County, some say all the way to the ocean. In terms of asking for a second and maybe getting something done up here, I was wondering if we could, if I could get a second for an idea that's been presented to me. One of the things that we've done, the council has done and has really been accepted well is the military banners. I do not know a single person who doesn't think that that's one of the, the ideal things we've done. My area, in my district, Romaland, has not been, been included in that. There have been no military banners there for several reasons. One, one is the, is the state of California controls one of the major roads and they're a pain in the neck and they're difficult. I would like to get a second to do two things. One is to work with them to get banners up on Highway 74. And the second idea is, is to put military banners on some other secondary roads up there too, so that Romaland can include itself in the, in Menifee.
I'll second it. There you go. I think unanimous consent on that one.
Thank you very much.
Good idea. Gentlemen, anything else? Mr. Furman?
Yeah. Well, there we go. There we go. I'd actually like to recognize a new resident here in our town of Menifee in the Audi Murphy Project who is attending his first council meeting. Gary and his wife right over here. Right here, just stand up a little bit and just raise your hand. There they go. Their first council meeting, new residents.
I want to thank my colleagues here for filling in and doing duty for me while I was celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary over Memorial Weekend. I really appreciate that. I'm sorry I missed some of those really good events, but that takes priority, that took priority in my life that weekend. I too attended the Menifee Motor Madness and the Student of the Year Celebration at Monta Leone Meadows. And to close out my little update, the chamber installation dinner this year was probably one of the, there's chairman of the board back up there, Mr. Amatouli. It was well done, sir. It was clearly evident to us that business activity is picking up in Menifee to the point where your membership is growing and we have to have it in a facility that's larger, that can handle that size of patrons in a ballroom. And wouldn't it be nice if we someday have that size of a ballroom here in Menifee so that we can have those types of events right here and not bust the capacity of Menifee Lakes Country Club as an example? So, well done to you. It was a great event and we all enjoyed ourselves. It was a nice evening. With that being said, if they're hearing no additional updates, we are on to the consent calendar. Are there any modifications to consent? Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I'd like to take out 10.2.
10.2 is being removed for separate consideration.
10.7.
And 10.7 for separate consideration. May I have a, a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second, may I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item 10.2, warrant register. Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I just took note that the legal fees again this month are 42,000. They were nearly 40,000 last month. If one were to end up 40,000 a month, you'd end up with a half a million dollars of fees. And I, other than one time when we had a major lawsuit with Paris, I don't recall those kind of fees. So I would respectfully ask the city attorney if at some point prior to a council meeting, maybe we could sit down with the council so we have an understanding. I don't think most people on the council understand how those costs are breaking, broken down and they do seem exorbitant.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Mann, we did do a full analysis for you, as you know. It came at the very, end of a very long evening, however. But we do obviously break down the bills according to issue areas, that is, general matters, planning and that kind of thing. We cannot really do a closed session on that. There's, there's no reason that the public shouldn't know the substance, not the substance, the specifics, but at least the, the amounts and the hours that go into it. But I can assure you, if you recall the presentation that we did, that the fees for the city of Menifee are the lowest within the area on a per capita basis of virtually all the cities.
May I ask you, Ms. Biggs, we have here for this month 42,600. Are you aware of any other outstanding legal bills that are still to come into the city that have not yet been accounted for on this?
From our office? No. As a matter of fact, if you'll notice, one of the entries here is for February time that just hadn't been processed by the city. So there's about 12,000 from February that's involved in that. So it's actually less than the 40.
February was 40,000.
But we, we routinely get you a bill from our office within two weeks, usually it's more like 10 days, from the end of the month. That comes to the city and then the city spends whatever time it takes to process those bills, to have the departments look at them and so on. We don't have any control over that. So, but that's, that's where that is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Furman?
If the, if the department heads are viewing these invoices, would they be available for council to review?
I think we've told you that they are.
Okay, all right.
You do, you do need to make arrangements for that with the city clerk.
They'll be able to be reviewed. I think on the 6th of June.
Pardon?
I think.
No, the, I, I believe the city clerk has already informed us that we have the option to come in and review those at any time we choose.
Yes, certainly you're entitled to do that.
But I, I was thinking maybe they were complicated enough that we'd need explanation, but let me take step one first. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
The, one of the things that we did before, if you recall, Mr. Edgerton, and the, the original council, when you and I were on that finance committee and we are on the finance committee again, we had, we had the finance committee review the attorney's bill quarterly just as an extra set eyes. So I don't know if that would be something that you want to go back to or if you wanted to start off with this step one to whoever would like to review, you have the right to review.
Well, that would be up to you and the rest of the council. I, I think that would be good. If you'll recall, in that finance committee, you yourself discovered a number of areas where we could improve our internal control. And if I recall, I discovered a $78,000 duplication on a billing and again, city attorney's office, not your office, Ms. Biggs. So yes, I think that would be a good idea, but I, I would leave that to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. We'll, we'll make those available as they are now and then we'll discuss at the next finance committee whether we want to go back to doing that. Hearing that discussion, is there an approval on the warrant register? May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, we're looking at just item 10.2 at this moment, correct?
The warrant register, 10.2.
Got it.
Motion, and Mr. Edgerton's motion.
You could do them both at the same time if you want.
Well, we need to.
We could discuss.
You pulled, we have to, decorum wise, we have to.
Do the mayors, he pulled.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did not hear a motion in a second on 10.2.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
The motion was Mr. Edgerton.
I second it.
Mr. Furman?
Got you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item 10.7, Mr. Furman?
Actually, these are just some comments and some questions that I had. I, I recall back in 2011, I believe, when the county was collecting these fees. And I remember that year they were 800 and almost 850,000 dollars. And I'm glad to see that we are going to take over those fees, finally. You know, I've been bugging for years to do that. But how did we reduce now to the, it's 539 fee, 539,000 in fees? Is that the annual fee?
Yes. And our consultant from Webb and Associates is here, but we have some zones that we're not assessing on recommendation from the county, that the costs were not, the actual costs were lower than what they were assessing in previous years, so those assessments are lowered to reflect the actual costs.
So then the 850 that, that they collected, should we not get a refund if there's money left in that piggy bank?
It goes into the zone and so that's part of the calculation into what the, the next year's assessment is. So it's like a savings account and we have total cost and I'll let Shane explain.
Okay.
This is Shane Spicer from Webb and Associates.
Thank you. It's just a little behooving to me.
Good evening. As Ms. Willoughby was stating, the engineer's report that's provided for this year's assessments reflect what's going to actually be enrolled on the tax rolls. The engineer's reports provided previously by the county were full amounts of what potentially could have been assessed had full development occurred and that they were going to be maintaining all the facilities. So the difference is the amount of at build out, $800,000 would be assessed and would be collectible to maintain those, those zones. We're not reflecting any of those amounts that are not going to be assessed. We felt that was overreaching, overstating the amounts that are actually going to be realized. As Ms. Willoughby has mentioned, there are a number of zones, we are not collecting, assessments are, we are not maintaining facilities. Development on those projects have not occurred.
Right, so then the 850 that was estimated in 2011 was never collected?
Correct.
Oh, that's good to know. Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, some guidance here. Since this item was pulled, we have three resolutions within this consent. Do we have to take them one at a time or can we still just take 10.7 in its entirety?
You can take 10.7 in its entirety.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
All right, so moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Edgerton. Roll call vote? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
On to our first public hearing tonight, agenda item 11.1, a public hearing to approve agreement with the state of California to identify jurisdictional boundaries of State Highway Route 215 between Keller Road and McLaughlin Road due to cities incorporation. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jonathan Smith, your Public Works Director, has a brief actual staff report, very short for you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This is a paperwork clear up between the city and the county and Caltrans. Basically, this document recognizes the city of Menifee now as a city. This is something that should have occurred when we incorporated this. It was discovered during the process of the Newport Road Widening Project that this document was not updated, so that's why it's here tonight.
Counsel, any questions of, of staff? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing at time 7:45. Madam Clerk, was this properly legally noticed and have we received any correspondence?
Yes, it's been noticed and no, we have not received correspondence.
Do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, sir.
I'll close this public hearing at time 7:46. Any discussion amongst the council on this matter? It seems to be pretty straightforward where it's a cleanup.
Move it.
Move it on by Mr. Edgerton?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Furman. Roll call vote?
Thank you. Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
On to agenda item 11.2, a public hearing for ordinance number 2014-142, repealing portions of section 1850 of Riverside County Land Use Ordinance Number 348 and adopting section 9.16, metal shipping containers as accessory storage facilities pertaining to the standards applicable to metal shipping containers on residential properties. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, this has been going back and forth between council and Planning Commission and staff. We do have a, a staff report for you if you'd like us to do that, although there may be an alternative to what we're, we discussed tonight. I'd like to know if you'd want me to hand it back to you to go through the process or if you'd like Mr. Leclerc to go through the updated information that we have.
I will defer to my colleagues. Do you want to hear the updated information from Mr. Leclerc or shall we proceed with the opening the hearing and taking some public testimony?
Shall we proceed?
Let's go. Let's go with public.
Okay, I hear no objection to doing that. We'll hold off, and we'll, I'm sure we'll be back to you on several different questions. But hearing no comment at this time.
Thank you, sir.
I will update the, excuse me, I will open the public hearing at time seven forty-seven. Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor.
And have we received any correspondence since noticing?
Yes, Your Honor. In your red folder, please note email from Mark Felt. Please also note a packet that looks like this. Amendment for is, or, I'm sorry, attachment for is on it. It is information that modified what you have in your packet, and also has a yellow highlighted version attached to it that you submitted this afternoon. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And just another, just a very, very brief explanation of what this is. This is, this is a modification of Planning Commission Resolution D that was passed at their meeting on May thirteenth, I believe, as modified subsequent to a couple of meetings with some community members, which I'm sure we're going to hear some additional feedback on tonight. And so that's what this is. You have that color-coded version, and then a smooth version from staff, assuming that those things change so that we can put this one to rest hopefully once and for all tonight. If there aren't any questions about that, then I'd like to proceed with taking public testimony on this item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Per speaker.
Yes, sir. Ken Wilhite.
Good evening.
At least they're not diving glasses.
It's not clear at this point which way you're going to come down on the container issue.
Yes. Couple of weeks ago, I attended the meeting for the planning commission.
I did want to point out that in the general plan, in the community values, we point out
I haven't gone out of the country for a while, and wasn't aware when all this was started.
that we value our historically rural character, and we value the ability to accommodate equestrian
You're asking us to give up things that we've owned and paid and bought for before this
and rural estate uses within specific areas in our city. In the Vision 2030, which is twenty-five years from now, we have preserved our diverse
was even a city. You gave us no reimbursement. You gave us no real options, except to bring on costs upon us if we want to have to get
mix of neighborhoods that provide an array of housing choices for a variety of life stages
it permitted.
and lifestyles.
And if we're going to have to get these permitted, this is the situation I see.
It appears, especially in the rural areas of Menifee, that the use of containers to
You're going to come up with specs from your engineers on the worst-case scenario, place
store equipment that might otherwise be sitting rusty alongside the, in a field, or otherwise
these restrictions and requirements upon us, make us pay for it, inspection fees, permit
need to be contained and separated from the elements, are part of that lifestyle, and
fees, and all these other fees, along with the cost of doing so.
we should be very careful if we limit the ability of those people to use what's a very functional container to protect their property.
But if it falls down, something lands on it or burns because you tell us where to put
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhite. Are any questions? Next speaker, please.
it, you take no responsibility.
John Foster.
You're taking away a life. I don't know what I'm going to do with my facilities if I have to take them out of that container, just like this gentleman was saying. Do you want me to put them on the yard? Because I'm pretty sure you don't want my garden equipment alongside of my fence. Otherwise, we've got to go get these storage facilities. And I don't, I don't, I don't understand why. I hear that some people are using these things, there's families living in them. I don't know if any families live in them. Maybe they're doing, making drugs in them. But is it not something for our police force, and not for our council? These, these things that you guys are bringing on the rural community are costly. If you take these things away from us, we're at risk of theft, we're at risk of deterioration. The county ordinance that you speak of in the past, I know a lot of people at the county, and I call them, I have some friends there. They brought this ordinance in, but the reason why they didn't enforce it is because they didn't want the lawsuits. The, and I really don't want my tax money, and I'd like to support you guys, to go to that legal counsel. It's an unnecessary expense. But I'm afraid that's what we're going to end up with. Never once have I been asked to move a storage container or ask my neighbor to do so. You guys are talking about telling us if we can keep them.
Mr. Foster, that's your time.
One moment, thank you. If we can keep them, then we have to do it to where you guys say so. I get along with my neighbors. If they don't like it, I'll move it.
Thank you, John. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Eric Brown.
One second, please don't start the timer. I actually noticed something. You received an email from a Mr. Mark Felt. How do I get this projector going? Can I? Is it possible? All right. There's an F3 stated here, and the, well, you can't really see it, but I was going to address the email that was written. And, one, it's false, very false. One, Roxanne Thompson has never, nor is she, nor will she ever be a paid employee of Thomas Furman. She lives in a completely permitted structure that has been around since nineteen sixty-eight. So whoever Mark Felt is, he's wrong. The other side of it is, he talks about electricity in a shipping container. I called to every shipping container company I could find, and they all said that, yes, this is normal. They do it all the time. They refrigerate them, do all kinds of things. So for a man that does his homework, he looks like the child who read the first page. So the other side of it is, the email is false. I looked through it, and I noticed that it talks about it in F3. There is no F3 in the ordinance, and the only two people who knew of an F3 were Roxanne Thompson and Mayor Mann. Mayor Mann's idea was to bring forward an F3 to Roxanne Thompson. It was never placed in public documents, so the only two people who have knowledge of it were Scott Mann and Roxanne Thompson. This is the ordinance. Excuse me, let me find it. F1 and 2. He talks about, it's mentioned as F3, this is a copy of the email sent by Mark Felt. There is no F3 on the ordinance. So I'd like to know where the email came from.
Yeah, I would, too.
Yeah. So that's a little interesting to me. It seriously gives me doubts to the email. It took me about five minutes to see it. The other side of it is, in Tom Furman's defense, is he lives on twenty-three acres of property. That means, under the current county ordinance, he's allowed to own shipping containers. The other side of it is, he does not own any shipping containers. So I, I'm really wondering where you get these facts from, and, gentlemen, I wouldn't follow an idiot into a decision, and whoever sent this email, Mr. Mark Felt, is an idiot. It took me three minutes to disprove just about everything he put forward in this email, and it was really saddening that people were actually scared of it. To be honest, I really hope that you have better judgment than to listen to something who can't even get the ordinance correct. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I thank you for bringing that to the attention, because the F3 that he is talking about is something that Roxanne Thompson and I put together and drafted together, and what he's saying about that paragraph is not even accurate, because the paragraph that we drafted jointly together talks about residential property, has nothing to do with commercial enterprises. So.
Right. And, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, however, within your staff report, on the last page of your staff report, similar to the last page of the planning commission's staff report.
Is there an F3 there?
There is an F3. That was submitted by Ms. Roxanne.
Okay, so.
We do not have that on any of our ordinances. I've looked.
It's part of the staff report.
Was it inputted without our direction?
I don't know, but.
Well, this is something that we need to know.
Well, by the time we get done taking public testimony and actually get to the redrafted ordinance, I think this point will be moot.
It's never moot if it's false.
Well, I agree with you, it's a false statement. On to the next speaker, please.
Mike Mudd.
Something very fishy going on here, Mr. Scott Mann, Mayor of Menifee. You agreed to work with the community. You made a statement when you were running your campaign, which was in a reference to Darcy Kinsey. "I will not turn my back on the community," which is, in fact, what you're doing now because you made a commitment to the rural community to abide by what was being worked out with Roxanne Thompson. I hate to say it, Scott, but at the eleventh hour, you get an email all of a sudden from someone that's very adamant about these containers. Yet, we have never seen that person standing where I'm standing right now. Why do you suppose that is, sir? Why?
Couldn't you tell?
Because he doesn't exist, that is why. I contend that you made up this fictitious person. Emphatically, I will say it, you're a liar. You made this up so that you can look good and move away from your commitment to the community on working with the ordinance amendment that has been squashed by this man and that you agreed to. Why is that, Scott? Why all of a sudden have you changed your mind? At the eleventh hour, we see an email by someone that doesn't exist. How come I've never stood here where I am, Scott Mann? You're a liar.
Well, I emphatically, you have absolutely no idea what you're speaking about. Miss, excuse me, you had your time, this public testimony. You have no idea what you're talking about. I emphatically deny, I have no idea who this person is. It's clearly a fictitious name. Mark Felt, whistleblowing fourteen at Gmail. Someone thinks they're clever. Mark Felt was the Deep Throat guy from the Nixon administration that brought down the Watergate scenario. My email from Thursday, May twenty-ninth, which encapsulate, it summarizes the discussions that Roxanne and I had dated, May twenty-ninth at eight twenty-two PM, went from me, from my personal email address, to Ms. Roxanne Thompson at balloonsbyroxanne@msm.com. Nobody else, nobody else got this email from me. Not one person.
The IP will be traced, trust me.
Yeah, well, when you pull the IP, you're not going to find anything that's related to me. Okay, next speaker, please.
I want to say something.
Yeah, please, Mr. August.
I want to say something, Michael, and I've been wanting to say this for a couple of, a couple of meetings, because, you know, I understand, I used to be out where you were, and I used to disagree with people on the council. But let me tell you, sitting up here, and I've never called anybody a liar at a city council meeting, I've heard it two times directed to our mayor in the last two weeks. I disagree with Mr. Mann many times. But, Michael, you know how much I respect you and how much I like you, and I've heard it from Ms. Manier as well. But the point is, if you want someone to listen to you when you get up to that podium, once you use the word liar and you start criticizing, calling people names, and innuendo and things like that, you lose our attention. So if you want to make your point, I would hope in the future that you don't resort to those types of extreme words. And I'm only asking you to do that because I do respect your opinions. Thank you.
Mr. Edgerton?
I hope, Mr. August, you're not being disingenuous. I, I believe you are being genious.
Next speaker, please.
Roxanne Thompson.
Seems like my name's been brought up a lot this evening. I don't even know where to start. Scott, you and I had a meeting, we sat there for forty minutes, you had to cut it short. We had the proposed ordinance from the rural community in front of both of us. These people worked hard, they paid good money for it. We had those two pages in front of us, nothing else, nothing more. You went through it line by line by line with me. You approved, you, and then we agreed on four points, that you would, that you would email after you reworded it. And the approval was based on the ordinance that was submitted by the rural community. You then, you then, when I hit the door, hand me ordinance D with, that's pages and pages long. I don't know how much money you people spend on this stuff, but it's absolutely ridiculous. Containers, Jesus Christ, there's kids walking through sewage, right, Scott?
Please watch your language.
They're walking through sewage, aren't they, Scott?
You can make your points without using.
No, I'm really angry at you. You misrepresented, you lied to me, you misrepresented yourself to this community. And let's talk about the email. Do we all acknowledge this is a fraud? Do we acknowledge this is a phony email?
It appears that it is, yeah.
Yeah, and it comes to you, Scott. It comes to you, and it goes to everybody else, except for you, Mr. Furman, it went to your city email. We're doing, we're tracing the IP address, and based on what we've found out so far on this being a fraud, what this is, is interference with, what is lawful, I mean, it's an unlawful interference, right? An lawful interference? I think the new DA ought to take a look at this and investigate and see where this came from, because it sure caused an uproar about three thirty today. And I do not agree with the ordinance D. And Scott, you misled me, and you lied to me, and you deceived me, and I'm so disappointed in you. And yes, you did send me F3. And I don't even understand what the heck is going on here, but I can tell you one thing, I don't trust you as far as I can throw you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton.
Roxanne.
Roxanne.
Hello, Roxanne. I'm going to have to take, I'm going to have to take a term from John Denver. I am confused. Where, where are we now? What, do we have something in front of us that represents the rural community?
We had, we had what we agreed to pay, we agreed upon. He didn't bring me D. We had the two pages. We went through it line by line by line, and he agreed. And he said, we can do this, and we can do this. I will send you, I will send that to you, okay, Roxanne? Great, I thought we were on the same page. We're agreeing across the board. Next thing I know, I have this huge thing in front of me. We didn't have time to review it. These people are never going to agree to this. There's constitutional rights involved here. There's people's property rights, and you people keep taking them away one at a time. And no, I don't, I thought we had an agreement, but apparently some people can't be trusted.
Mr., you still have the floor, sir. What else can be said?
I want to table this until we investigate it. I'm taking this to the DA.
Mr. Furman, Councilmember Furman.
The ordinance, Roxanne, that you drafted.
Well, actually, it was done by.
Well, you and, you and the citizens and your consultant.
Yeah.
There must be quite a few things that are in disagreement with D.
Yes.
And your ordinance, I've read it, it's on the last two pages, it's page forty-six and forty-seven, is very simple and to the point. Two pages is a lot better than, than eight or ten pages of minutia that I've read in this other ordinance before. And right now, there's, there's so much penciled in that I don't even understand what the, what the changes are, what we're trying to get through. The ordinance that you, your committee wrote is straightforward and simple, and that would be the one that I would support.
Mr. Denver?
I'm disappointed with the way that this ordinance was written.
Next thing I know, I have this huge thing in front of me. We didn't have time to review it. I, these people are never going to agree to this. There's constitutional rights involved here. There's people's property rights and you people keep taking them away one at a time. And no, I don't, I thought we had an agreement, but apparently some people can't be trusted.
Mr., you still have the floor, sir. What else can be said?
I want to table this until we investigate it. I'm taking this to the DA.
Mr. Furman, Councilmember Furman.
The ordinance Roxanne, that you drafted...
Well, actually, it was done by...
Well, you and, you and the citizens and your consultant.
Yeah.
There must be quite a few things that are in disagreement with D.
Yes.
And your ordinance, I've read it. It's on the last two pages. It's page 46 and 47, is very simple and to the point. Two pages is a lot better than, than eight or 10 pages of minutia that I've read in this other ordinance before. And right now, there's, there's so much penciled in that I don't even understand what the, what the changes are, what we're trying to get through. The ordinance that you, your committee wrote is straightforward and simple, and that would be the one that I would support.
Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
I'm disappointed with the way that this ordinance was written. I don't know, we seem to be having a problem here with one or more of our council having meetings with the general public who are not council people and then coming back and preparing ordinance...
Isn't your job to represent us? Excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Wally did that with Valleywide and Greg, and now you've done this with her. I really think that we ought to keep it inside with...
I had nothing to do with this.
I really think that we should do inside and we should be dealing with ordinances amongst ourselves. And these secret meetings, I think, are not transparent. And I know that one of the goals that we had amongst ourselves was to be more transparent. So I would like to suggest that this is the kind of thing that happens if we don't do ordinances in normal city ways and so on.
You mean by handing the citizens back?
My only...
Without citizen input.
Mr. August?
Yeah, John, Mr. Denver and I, we, you know, we disagree on that. I feel the more interfaced with the public. And I can tell you, I knew there was a meeting. I don't think it was hidden by any means. I think we all knew that Scott was meeting with her, and I certainly encouraged him to meet him. What I don't, I, I do know that as we proceed along and we get to a certain point here, I knew there were, I know there were certain concessions made, and I'm sure Mr. Mann will go over there in the future. I read your ordinance, and to me, it was too open-ended. It was vague and it was too expansive. That's my opinion. And so I thought what Mr. Mann did, put it back into D and agreed to the concessions that were important to you and the people in the rural community, they're there now.
We tire of it.
Okay. Okay. Well, we, we have to go, we have to go over this, and I'll let Mr. Leclerc do that, or I can do it if you want. And those things that weren't in D that the Planning Commission approved and recommended are now in there because of the meeting that you had with Mr. Mann.
That's not what we based our meeting on. We based it on the original ordinance that's the rural people. If he would have put this in front of me, then we would have gone through it line by line. We went through the ordinance that these people submitted, line by line by line. And if you wanted to put D in front of me, Scott, put it in front of me and let's do it line by line, but don't misrepresent.
Okay, I'm going to correct you.
Line by line, Scott.
Excuse me, I'm going to correct you because we had a fantastic meeting.
Yes, we did.
Everything that you, everything that you presented is in D in some way, shape or form. And when you see it, and when we talk about it here, when we close the hearing, you're going to sign that everything that we agreed to is covered in the new modified D that the Planning Commission recommended that we consider. So I'm going to call upon Mr. Edgerton. He's got his line on. You have the floor, Mr. Edgerton.
Okay, I'm just responding to my colleague, Councilman Denver. I do appreciate where Councilman Denver is coming from, and I agree with Councilman Denver. You shouldn't have any secret meetings whatsoever. However, elected officials in this city and every other city in the state of California have an opportunity to meet with many people. I don't happen to take money from developers, but I'll meet with developers. If they ask to meet with me, I meet with them. I talk to them. If a constituent wants to meet with me, I meet with them and I talk to them. I have done that. I am doing that. I will continue to do that. That is my job as an elected official. It, no, it should not be secret. And I think what Greg and I did with Valleywide was a good meeting. It was understood, everybody, we were, we were doing that. I think it turned out well on the floor and, and Mr. Denver, you supported our motion. And while I don't understand how this ended between Roxanne and Scott, these were not secret meetings by the mayor. I will defend the mayor in reference to the fact that he was having meetings, and I thought it was a good idea. What has happened, I don't understand it all unravel. And as you know, Roxanne, when I got that information from Scott, I emailed it to you and I, just to make sure there was an understanding. Apparently, there wasn't enough time to get that.
May I say, if we were going to address ordinance D, wouldn't that be what was in front of us? Not the rural community ordinance? That's what was in front of us. That's what we addressed, line by line. If we were to address D, D should have been in front of us, not the ordinance that I brought in and I gave you a copy of. You gave me nothing. You didn't say Roxanne. Let's do D, you know, and let's go through it line by line.
During the meeting, that I liked D and that we could blend your input...
That is not true. That is a total falsehood.
Next speaker, please.
Total falsehood.
Next speaker, please.
Earl Phillips.
And Scott, you did write the email.
I did not write the email. I haven't, you're nuts.
Negative. What did you say?
I said, "I'm nuts." I must have wrote the email. Mr. Phillips, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Earl Phillips. I am speaking from two points of view tonight. I would like to thank the council for their indulgence and the audience for being here on this issue. My first comments are based upon my 33 years in the military as a leader. Number one, I cannot respect an attack on one of my people. The attack on Mr. Leclerc was erroneous. Now, as a planning commissioner, Mr. Leclerc provided me with the documents that are being contested tonight, including the two pages. He also provided the council with that information, just so that we can have the record straight. We got down into the weeds on that, and our comments are a matter of record. I am a little upset because, number one, I do not like to see my people get attacked. The attack on Mr. Leclerc was unfounded, and I wish that the individual who made that attack would perhaps find it in his way of thinking to apologize. Nobody knows what kind of workload that Mr. Leclerc has to go through and what he has done in order to get this thing to the floor. That's basically all I have to say. But we on the Planning Commission did receive the documents that were alleged not to have been provided, and we actually considered them. We on the Planning Commission made our decisions based upon the entire information that he had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next speaker.
That is all the speaker slips for this public hearing item.
Is there anybody else that didn't put in a slip that would like to address the council on this matter? You, yes, you may. Go to the mic and ask. Yeah.
Speaking of that line... I was actually, because I apologize for her, her temper couldn't get up there. I was actually just wondering if there was any way that, because you said that you, you blended the documents, correct? I was wondering if there was any way, if you guys were making a decision on it tonight, but is there any way that we would be able to review this document and give it another, a different approval before any decision is actually made? Because I think we'd want to run it by the community itself. I don't, I don't think we want to put an ordinance in place that the community would completely reject. So if it's possible, just to prevent any more legal fees, more burden on the taxpayers, is it possible that we could see this ordinance, review it, and resubmit a doctored version or anything else that we could find, just to prevent any further turmoil?
We'll see what happens with the council discussion. It may, it may end up that way. Any other speakers? Any none? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing at time 8:16. And I'm going to, if it would, if the council would indulge me on this, I'm going to take a couple, a leadership role on this, and I'm going to read this email. This is, this is very important because it was, it was alleged during public testimony that I never presented anything about D. In the email that I sent to Ms. Thompson on the evening of Thursday, May 29th, it reads as follows. It's very short. "Roxanne, thanks for your diligence and involvement in this issue. After all this time, it's good to see someone with some common sense. Your draft ordinance is very similar to option D presented by staff to the Planning Commission. The changes you and I discussed and agreed upon are highlighted in yellow below. In a nutshell, the elements of this agreement are, number one, if you got them, you can keep them. That's the containers. If you got the containers, you can keep the containers, subject to their appearance and their location in the ordinance. Number two, additional containers are banned in the city of Menifee, excluding for commercial and public agency use, which are covered in different ordinances. Number three, containers must be removed from real property upon the change of ownership, sale, gifting, deed, placement in a trust, et cetera. And property owners must submit a container count or, a container count on their property to City Hall in order to maintain their exemption." That is, those four elements, gentlemen, are the nexus of that agreement. And when I reviewed the ordinance that was presented by Ms. Thompson, I painstakingly reviewed option or Resolution D that the Planning Commission put together, all of these elements are contained in D as modified by Ms. Thompson and I last week. And so the email, the ordinance draft that's in your red binder is the result of that work, and you have a smooth copy of it, and you have a highlighted copy of all of those changes that reflect that agreement, if you so choose to reach that compromise. Madam Attorney?
Yeah, I just had one, one comment here, going back to the concern about this F3. That was in the material that was published by the city clerk when the agenda was published last week. So there's no secret as to where that was. That was in the materials apparently provided by Mr. Leclerc to the city clerk for publication.
Was it added without our knowledge? So the, the...
I don't, I don't think Mr. Claire, Leclerc added it.
Hold on, we are, hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, just, I just wanted to clarify that because the materials that everyone has and that were actually posted contain that. So it's, it's not a secret it wasn't added by anyone's...
It's, it's there. It was in the Planning Commission agenda as well, so...
Okay.
Sorry, a clarification on what was said. I didn't understand what she said. Are you, are you saying Mr. Leclerc wrote that email?
No, 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 I'm not talking about the email. The, in, in terms of the staff report itself, there was concern about the letter that was received today referencing a paragraph that, that Ms. Thompson didn't recognize. But that paragraph was in the materials provided by Mr. Leclerc to the city clerk over a week ago.
Are we, are we able, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, are we able to determine if that email was internally generated? Is there any way we can do that? Can Derek do that? I'd be worried while, I want to know that.
It's, Ms. Thompson, they're going to have to do it. There's a process. It's a Gmail account. So whoever set it up is a Gmail account. It can't be, well, if the IP, if the IP address comes from within the city of Menifee, it could be done that, it could be found out that way. Because everything's mapped with an IP address. It's a series of numbers. Mr. August?
No, I just want to say, I'm guessing here, but I don't understand why we're making a big deal about that email. It's not germane to anything we're discussing.
It's not.
I don't understand. It didn't impact me one way or the other.
Nor did it sway my opinion.
No, not at all. So why does it make any difference who sent the email, whether it's fictitious or whether it's a real person?
Because it was, it was at the last moment, and I spoke to the mayor, and it was my understanding that there had been an agreement. And then this email came in, and if you got the chain, I sent it to all of the council people. I asked the city manager what it meant. And obviously, it was confusing to everybody. The reason it matters, if it, if it came internally, then it was something that wasn't done openly within City Hall, and it was meant to confuse. And if that were the case, we should know where that came from.
Mr. Furman?
I think that there's a lot of strife, a lot of questions that really have to be answered. And Mr. Brown made some good comments. I think the, I'm going to make a couple of points here. His point would be to clean, to clean these pencil marks up. I hate to get stuff at the 11th hour. This ordinance is, with the pencil marks, is handed to me in a red folder before the council meeting. It's not fair that I leaf through it on a, on a, a short notice. So I would like to see all the changes written up. And also, why does the mayor, is he the only one that can pencil in changes? There might be some changes that each one of us councilmen might want to do. What gives him any more authority to, to make a change to a ordinance than any of the other councilmen? We all have the same rights. So my suggestion is, clean this up, write it up the way that, that it is now. Let's get it back to the councilman to review and to the Citizens Committee to review, and we'll hit this at the next council meeting for a vote.
That's, that's a good comment, but I, like others, I'm not going to let you misrepresent the scenario either. This, excuse me, my turn. This ordinance is a draft, and had you read your email that I had sent earlier this afternoon, it clearly said, "This is a, this is a summarization of the discussion that we had built into Resolution D that the Planning Commission recommended to us, and it achieves the agreement that we had made." And no, you're absolutely right. I don't have any more say-so in this matter than any of you do. It's the whole body, and that's what this is. This is a summary of those proposed changes. It's a draft. And so...
Well, why couldn't Wally put some changes in?
Well, I'm not, oh, my goodness. We, that's the purpose of, that's the purpose of me bringing it forward to you tonight. We've had our, it's been publicly noticed. We've had a staff report. We've taken public testimony. This is a presentation to you, there's, to all of you, and we can change it to our heart's content. However, it captures the agreement that was made the other night in a, in a, in a great way. I think it's a good product. And so I'm not questioning the need or the, I'm not questioning your desire to have more time. I'm not questioning that. I'm just clarifying your statement about me having more authority over anybody else. It's absolutely wrong. Mr. Edgerton?
Right. Let's cut to the chase. Mr. Mayor, as you know, I spoke to you.
Yep.
I spoke to Roxanne, and I thought this was a thing made in heaven. Judy said, "Well, is there going to be any problem tonight?" I said, "It's going to be smooth sailing." You never should say that. So obviously, and I was going to support where you were coming from tonight, Mayor, and obviously from the diocese, there's confusion. I think we, we should lay the thing over and give it an opportunity to be massaged again by you, by the community, by the council, and I, pardon?
I'm going to disagree with you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. If, listen, Plan D has been out there for, for several weeks. Everybody had an opportunity to review D several weeks. You had enough, two weeks. That's enough time for you to review it. I don't know how many public hearings the Planning Com, if you'd have paid attention to what was going on in the city and the Planning Commission, you'd have a pretty good idea why we are where we are tonight. So Mr. Sinclair presented this with a clean copy, I believe, prior to the meeting tonight, did you not?
Yes, sir, I did.
Yes, you did. There's only four changes in that from D. Four. And those are four of the changes that Mr. Mann and Mr. Roxanne got together with, and they changed. I didn't agree with those changes. It is a work, it is a compromise between two people that know what's in the ordinance. And it appears to me, there's not too many people on this council that have paid too much attention to even review the document. So Mr. Mann is right, in my opinion. We should make a decision on this tonight.
Councilman August, I still have the floor. My concern, and I'm not in disagreement with what you're saying, but I think some of us had an understanding that the mayor had an agreement with the community, and I think the mayor thought he had an agreement with the community. It's very clear that there is a, is a big misunderstanding. I think to ram the thing through tonight, you're going to just leave a lot of people angry and unhappy. I don't think that's good for the community. I don't think it's good for staff. I don't think it's good for the council. I think you're better to lay it over. I delegate somebody, let Scott continue to work on it if he wants to, and let's see if we can't come back with something where we're all together. if we can't come back with something where we're all together. If we make a decision tonight, it's going to be very much divided. That's all I'm concerned about.
May I make one more point, Mr. Deputy Mayor? I've read the two pages, 46 and 47, of what the staff report is. If you take that document, and you probably haven't, but maybe you have, if you take that document and you try to blend that in to D, except for those four changes, guess what? You're not going to be able to do it. You're not going to be able to do it, in my opinion. So, my opinion is, I'm going to take, I will take the suggestions from, from the council, but we're going to be here next time. We're going to be arguing the same stuff we're arguing tonight. And I hope everybody does a little research on the ordinance if we do hold it over, but you will not be able to blend what's in those two pages that Ms. Thompson turned in with D, except for those four changes. And I think the mayor made a generous, I, I think they worked out a nice compromise, and I, and I had the compromise on that, too.
Well, Mr. August, you, you have a very angry constituency. Why not let the mayor continue to work? And let's make sure there's an understanding. That's all I'm concerned about. I've looked at it. I've read it. I don't have anything that I want to introduce. I just want that community happy. I'd rather not see the mayor, I have some disagreements with the mayor, but on this one, I thought he gave an effort to having pillaged, plundered, and I, that's all that's going to happen to him and us if you pass that tonight. And I, I think it's, it's avoidable. Laying it over for one session isn't going to hurt anyone, and I think it may get us all together. That's all I'm after.
Mr. Furman?
I almost forgot my train of thought. Well, I feel after, after three years, two more weeks isn't going to make any difference. And I want to point out one fact, okay? You've had dozens and dozens of speakers for keeping their containers, and not one person that, that actually qualifies for a container, that has a one acre piece of property, not one person has ever spoke against a container ordinance.
How about me?
So, two more weeks, two more weeks of, of time to smooth this out, I'm going to, I'm going to second Wally's motion.
Mr. Denver?
Did you have something to add?
Yeah.
I have two acres of property, and I don't want a container.
I, I, I'm okay with the discussion. I think that...
You have a 15,000 square foot garage, huh?
You know, I, I agree, I agree, and I agree with parts, bits and pieces of, of everything that's been said. I'm, I'm where Mr. August is at in terms of the length of time that we've been at this, and I feel like, I feel like I've personally been sandbagged on this whole particular process here. And so, with that being said, I'm okay if we take another two weeks with this because frankly, the community needs to see where I, where these changes have been proposed, and I think they'll see, when they see it, that they'll be okay with it. Now, may there, will we be changing some happies to some glad's or glad's to happies? Maybe. But I don't think in substance, it's going to change from the, if you got them, you can keep them, you can't have anymore, you got to get rid of them upon sale of property, and you have to have an appearance and location that's consistent with the original code. So, if there's some setback issues, or if there's some minor tweaks in here that need to be done, I'm okay with the community having another looksee at it before, so that we can finally put this thing to bed after three years.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and I, I would just add that it appears, and I have not been part of these negotiations, I've stayed out of them, and I want to continue to stay out of them. But it was assumed apparently that there was a two-page document, which I read and looked at, and now it is a longer document. And I would agree with you, from what you've said, it sounds like that the bases have been covered. However, Councilman August, as you know, when you extend a document, the devil is in the details. And that sounds to me like where they're coming from. They've got some problems with something that's in the details. And I think our mayor is in a better position to get it unraveled. I don't want to be there. I just want to be there to say aye, and let's get a unanimous decision.
Okay. Mr. Leclair, I'm going to call, I'm going to call on Mr. Furman first, and then I'll call on you.
I can probably assure this council, if they massage this two more weeks, there might be a compromise or two, but I'm willing to make a vote next meeting, and I think Wally is too, and I want to put this to bed also.
Okay, we've got a motion, got a second.
Thought we had a compromise seven days ago, but apparently not. Mr. Leclair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll remind you that I'm not here at the next council meeting.
Lucky you.
Yeah, lucky you. Okay. So, Mr. Johnson?
I was waiting to see where this would go. As you know, the, the next council meeting will, is our typical fiscal year-end, where we're moving a lot of contracts, paying out a lot of things, moving our budget forward. So, I would respectfully ask we move it to July 2. That'll give a couple more weeks of, of discussion and...
That's fine with me.
If, if that's okay with everyone, I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, you got it.
The hearing, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Before we call the question on that, Madam Attorney, we closed the public hearing. We can't, do we, do we need to reopen the hearing and, and continue the hearing like we did two meetings ago? Or if we concluded our business, we've got a draft, the draft is just bringing, we're giving new direction to staff that's contrary to the Planning Commission's recommendation to us. The, the council wants to have more time, the community wants to have more time. Is that okay without reopening the hearing and continuing it?
You can actually do either of those, depending on whether you want to have additional public testimony at the next meeting. If you want to be able to hear from the community on the item, then you should continue it open. If you, if you are resolved that you're going to be looking at this, that the discussion has been in full this evening, you could leave it closed, but, but you will not have the opportunity then to have the public say, yes, we reviewed it and we agree. So, my recommendation would be to reopen and continue it open.
Any objection? I'm reopening the hearing at time 8:35 for the purpose of laying this over. There's a motion and a second on the floor. I'd like a roll call vote on this, please.
Yes, sir. On the motion on the floor to...
Continue to July, time certain, July 2nd.
July 2nd, yes, sir. Councilmember August? Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto Agenda Item, Discussion Item 12.1.
I'm going to take a small break, scrap ten minutes.
Okay. Nor did I. We are going to recess for 10 minutes. It is 8:35. We will re-adjourn at 8:45. Adjourned, time 8:45. We have a quorum of the council present with three members, and if we could get the audience back in their chairs, we have our staff here. And while I'm trying to talk slowly so I can get Mr. Edgerton to hear us in the other room, and Mr. Furman, wherever he may be, let's go ahead and, Ms. Willoughby, can you round up any straggling council members and throughout the building over there?
We're down.
We're missing two. And so, with that being said, Mr. Johnson, we're on Agenda Item 12.1. Approve Agreement with RGM Design Group for Parks, Trails, Open Space and Recreation Master Plan. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Robert Lennox, your Community Services Director, has the staff report for you on this item.
Thank you, City Manager Johnson, Mayor, and members of council. It's my pleasure to present the proposed, recommended staff contract award for the Parks, Trails and Open Space and Recreation Master Plan. Just a little bit of background on the process, and on the February 5th council meeting, the council directed staff to pursue a comprehensive parks and recreation program for the city. A full inventory, part of that process was identifying the need for a master plan to fully inventory the city's current park assets, programs, and capacity for growth into the future. That process includes assisting with CIP planning and sets development and funding priorities for staff and city council. Additionally, it solicits assistance and input from the community on their preference for public facilities, preferred amenities, and use types. Some of the components of a master plan process that staff is recommending and would take place over the next 11 to 12 months include these 10 tasks that are part of the RJM proposal. One is a work plan. Second is a city policy and standards review. As I mentioned earlier, an inventory and analysis of existing parks, trails, and open space, as well as recreation facilities and programs. The fourth is a demographic analysis. As it's been mentioned in prior meetings, and as well as in the budget workshop earlier today, the city is growing, and its demographics are constantly changing. So, the master plan process would also capture that. The fifth, and probably one of the more important pieces, is a community needs assessment. This includes, in conjunction with item number eight, an outreach to the community through workshops and meetings with commissions and committees to provide feedback on what the preferred types of facilities and amenities in the cities, in the city will be moving forward. There, about media, about halfway through the process, there's a draft plan that's proposed. Development of specific site park master plans for each of the parks, both currently in existence for any improvements, as well as those proposed new ones that are not yet built. The community master plan review, which is essentially the, the wrap-up of outreach to the community, and then a final adoption of the Parks, Trails, Open Space and Recreation Master Plan at the end, which is about 11 to 12 months down the road. In terms of the process, staff had, has posted, had posted a request proposal and was issued it on March 22nd, and with a deadline of April 16th, 2014. Total of seven responses received, which were rated by team of staff members. Based on the initial rankings, three finalists were selected and interviewed. Those were conducted on the week of May 12th. And based off the combination of rankings and interviews, RGM Design Group was selected. It's being recommended by staff. The cost of the proposed contract is not to exceed $220,000, which is within the budget So, again, recommended actions are to approve and authorize city manager to execute a professional service agreement with RGM Design Group to complete a Parks, Trails and Open Space Recreation Master Plan study and report for the city of Menifee in an amount to exceed $220,000. Approve a 10% contingency allocation for the project in the amount of $22,000 for a total project budget of $242,000, and authorize city manager to execute change orders up to a total of $22,000. Finally, approve a budget allocation of $190,000 from Parks Diff Development Impact Fees Fund and $52,000 from the Trails Diff Fund to finance this project. Before council takes action, I would like to invite up representatives from the RJM Design Group to introduce themselves. Bob Meeting from RJM, principal with them, to say a few words on their behalf.
Thank you, Robert. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, members of the community. Thank you very much for inviting us here this evening. RGM Design Group has been in business for 27 years, and we have specialized in park and recreation planning and park design for over 25 years. We have provided services throughout the state of California to similar communities. We are very interested and happy to work with this community, and our process is based upon a community-driven consensus process, and it's something that we're very proud of. It's something that gives you a tool that is statistically valid so that you can go forward in confidence in developing your park system. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, concludes, concludes my report and staff's recommendation for council.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox. Mr. Furman?
On February 5th, council directed staff to pursue the citywide, valleywide approach in this package. I'm going to read the minutes from the February 5th meeting. Councilman Denver made a motion to continue the implementation of staff recommendations for the citywide view and of the, of the parks program with a planned workshop to determine how to accomplish this and include options of valleywide in a city to run services. So, there was, there was no direction given by council to develop a comprehensive master plan. We do not need an inventory of park assets, programs, and capacities. Valleywide has all that information, and Valleywide has the job for the next three years. We have an approved trails map that was approved in 2003 by the Board of Supervisors. We received a 20-acre park in Paloma High School in exchange for $3.5 million's worth of reduced DIP fees, which the city has done nothing with yet. We have a park in Quail Valley that is a limbo because the city and Canyon Heights can't reach an agreement. We need boots on the ground, getting easements, rights of ways, and landowner agreements. Now, our new Citizens Committee, they know what's the missing links. They know what parks are needed. They know what open spaces are needed. They can work out the details, do research, revise maps, and come up with recommendations on what to do. This will be their vision statement. Now, if you give this committee, okay, well, there's one item. Okay, Marty Rosen has been working on a trail to connect Paloma High School to Herc Boris Elementary School for two years. Lake Elsner is on board, but Menifee has failed to pull the trigger to finance the connection through Menifee. Marty is running into roadblocks and getting no assistance. Also, why was it, why was it me that caught that the trail was on the wrong side going into Quail Valley? We have people in our city who care and put boots on the ground. We need funds for projects that exist now and not spend a half a million dollars in the next 16 months to get an 800-page book of rhetoric on what the experts say we should do when we don't have the money to do it. The council knows what has to be done. Pull the trigger, spend some money with the, the new committee, the new committee's recommendations, give them a good budget. And I guarantee that they'll have miles of connected trails, parks, and open space that we will be proud of. I would like to comment on a speech that was made by Scott Mann on Saturday night, and impressed me and a lot of other people. He said, "Government works best when it gets out of the way." So, let freedom reign. I cannot support the waste of this taxpayer dollars on a report. I will be making a motion to either postpone this item for at least one year or table So far, this city has not spent $1 that I know of on trails, parks, or open space. The Trails Park, the Trail and Parks Committee has a job to do, so let's let them do it. And do not waste taxpayer dollars on a needless report. Those are my comments.
Okay, before, before we take any more, this was supposed to be questions of staff, but that's okay. And so, we have any public speakers on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ken Willhite?
Mayor, city council, staff, audience, my name is Ken Willhite. The first time somebody tells me something that I check up on, it turns out not to be true, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt. They could have made a mistake. The second time they tell me the same thing, and I know it's not true, and I know that they know it's not true, it starts to make me angry. If I hear the same lie repeated for a third time, I have to call it for what it is. There's somebody out there who either thinks I'm too foolish... There's somebody out there who either thinks I'm too foolish or too timid to call them on the statement. In this case, this is the third time that Mr. Lennox in a memo has stated that on February 5th, 2014, the city council directed staff to pursue a comprehensive parks and recreation program for the city. I'll share the same thing that Mr. Furman just did. The meeting of February 5th, the council directed, there was a motion to authorize staff to implement a citywide approach to delivering community services to parks and recreation programming for the city of Menifee, but that motion wasn't acted on. In fact, the substitute motion directed the staff to plan a workshop to discuss possible approaches to determine how a community services program can be accomplished, including options of valleywide and city-run services. So, I hope there's not a fourth time that we learn that the council directed staff to do something that council did not direct the staff to do. Now, as far as needing a comprehensive plan, we have a general plan. And in the general plan, there's an open space and conservation element, and that element cites California state law and says that we have to plan our parks and recreation. In fact, the plan is included in the general plan. So, I just don't, I don't think there's a need for it at this time. I can't imagine somebody sitting in the two lanes of traffic that form up in the single lane leading to Scott Road off the freeway, and they're sitting there in traffic thinking, you know what the city really needs is a comprehensive general plan for parks and recreation and trails. And I'm sure we don't need one, well, let me first jump to the statement, the fiscal impact that says the cost will be $240,000. That doesn't include the cost of staff to support the study or the indirect costs that burden the direct cost of the staff people. So, I respectfully ask the city that there are many other places that money can be spent. I ask the council to deny this proposal. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
That is the only speaker on this item.
Counsel, do you have additional questions of staff, since we haven't asked any? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to follow my sword for Robert Lennox here because he wasn't here on February 5th. So, any information that he has from that council meeting would have been from me or from our consultant, Sean Nelson. As far as the funds being used for the things, the funds are actually from a DIF account that has been sitting there for several years that need to be used. I understand there's other uses for those funds. I recognize that. But if you recall back, we didn't, several years ago, you know, we didn't have a CIP program. We put a CIP program in, we built Menifee Road, we built Newport, put together a pavement management plan. Now, we're going to be moving forward, and we're going to be sealing and rebuilding some of our roadways. We did a comprehensive general plan. That was a $2.1 or so million program, and Mr. Willhite is absolutely correct. It has an open space conservation element and a park element. That's not what this is. And now, we're working to move forward on a development code. So, I respectfully disagree with some of the things that I've heard because we do have to have a plan to move forward. And in staff's position, and in my position, and my understanding of where we would like to go as a city, we need a comprehensive plan for our parks. And yes, Valleywide has been contracted to operate and run our parks, but they do not have ownership of the parks, as far as I know yet. And they do not have a comprehensive master plan that includes the west side of I-215. So, the comprehensive master plan would include not only parks and recreation, but open space and trails. A couple of other issues, and I'm sorry I'm going so long, but I wanted to try to get this all down at the same time. We've been talking with Canyon Heights Park for three years, and the reason why we haven't accepted Canyon Heights Park is it's built with an HOA, and the developer was conditioned to build that, and the people who live there are conditioned to pay to keep it upgraded, maintained, in perpetuity. That means forever. So, we don't have funds to run and operate that park in perpetuity. And even if they gave it to us for free, there aren't any funds in their capital account because they've exhausted all of it as a group in the community. And we don't have the funds to rebuild that park. It's going to be nearly a million or so dollars just in seed money for bringing the turf back and the landscaping. So then, you talk about ongoing maintenance. Well, if the community that purchased a home, that's supposed to pay for the park that's associated with the community, isn't willing to pay a fee to keep that park alive, who else is going to pay to keep that park alive? We'd have to, that would have to suffice off the general fund. Finally, the trail connection and the interconnected trail, we've worked with Marty for several months, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Rosen, for several months, identifying different routes for that trail, even though it was never a council-directed goal. So, we've spent hours, Public Works, Jonathan Smith, myself, Robert Lennox now, in trying to identify this interconnected trail that this council has not agreed to do. So, those are funds that we've spent and time and energy and effort that we've spent to try to get these things moving. Now, if we had a comprehensive master plan with parks, recreation, trails, and open space, and we had a commission that was working through that process, those things would not only get done quicker, but they'd get done with the majority of the community, getting feedback from that group. That group would then be educating themselves on park, recreation, design, trails, master plan process, and recommending those things to this council for approval. So, I apologize for getting on my soapbox, but we need a plan to how to move forward.
Mr. Furman?
First, just some information on the Quail Valley Park. I don't believe they were asking, the ultimate thing would be to take over, but they wanted to co-sponsor, then to make it a citywide park, and wanted some, just to chip in and co-run that park for that situation. The thing here is, I and other people in this council have been fighting for this Trails and Parks Committee for, actually, since I came on board. And I even suggested it be a lifetime appointment. But, the fact is, I think they need the time. They need the time, and they need a budget, and they need to do some things now, okay? This comprehensive plan is going to take 16 months and spend a lot of money, and you're spending the DIF money that was for the trails, okay? Let's allocate that money and get some trails that we know have to be done, okay? Next year, okay? We can put money in the budget next year if you want to do this comprehensive plan. But, we have the 20-acre park, we got trails, we got connectivity, we got things that have to have boots on the ground and easements and stuff done now. And I don't think now is the time to blow a quarter million dollars on a report.
Mr. Johnson?
Just to rejoin you to that, Mr. Mayor and members of council, kind of scratching my head on the co-op thing for Canyon Heights, they actually approached me. I met with them. I've met with them three times, and they tried to give us the park. There was no co-opting. There was no city putting money in so that they could run an HOA park. That's illegal anyway. That's a gift of public funds because we don't own the park. We can't give them money. And so, the only real way to get this done is for them to give us the park, for us to go out to a vote, and have people actually agree to put money to the city so that we can run the park. So, the information that we gave back to them, that they've never responded to us, there's a lot of graffiti out there that needs to be corrected. There's water issues out there. There's landscaping problems. But, besides all that, the master plan is not a document of paper. If you believe the general plan is a document of paper, then we haven't done it justice in the way that we've presented it and gone through the process. Finally, the master plan process itself is community-engaging, number one. And number two, it's a nine-to-11-month process, not a 16-to-19-month process. So, we would have the document completed by next year.
I believe it says it'd be done late summer. Mr. August?
That's 14, 15 months. Well, here I go. I, this is one that troubles me a little bit. I think we had a meeting a month ago. It was probably the most difficult meeting I've had as a city council meeting because we blindsided, I feel we blindsided, the staff on whether or not to proceed with hiring seven new positions into the city. I want to, I feel, I kind of feel, and I kind of feel the staff at that meeting did not get the message from the council. I believe our message was, let's slow down. Let's take our time. Let's consider all our assets and all our resources, and then make a decision. We, at that council, at that meeting, Valleywide took over the west side of our parks, and I don't even know where the park that Mr. Johnson's speaking about right now. Valleywide runs the east side. They have a master plan. Valleywide is engaged not only on the west side, but they are engaged on the east side of our city. When I say I don't think the staff got the point from the council, is, what I'm saying is, I do believe we should have had more communication before this came up, before the council. My point is, Valleywide is an integral part of our city parks and community services program. Tonight, we are going to nominate a point, a planning commission, a five-member Planning, Parks, and Recs Commission. I think, before, and I'm not against a master plan, but before we decide to go out for a master plan and spend that kind of money, which a lot of people feel that money could be put into parks that are in need of repair and upgrade, I think we should have a Parks, Trails, and Planning Commission in place. And I do believe Valleywide should be at the table, the council should be at the table when after negotiation. You can look at it as kind of a what-how situation. We should have all those people in place, and we should determine what we want to do. And then, at that time, maybe it calls for a master plan to show us how we can do it. I do not believe at this particular point, we need to have a company, a premier company, they have a very, very good rep, to come in and run interviews in this city to ask us what the people of this city want for parks and recreation. I think the first dialogue belonged to the planning commission. I believe Valleywide should be at the table. I think we should have that dialogue before we make a decision on whether to go for a master plan or not. And those are my comments.
Mr. Lennox?
I'll second that much. Yeah? Thank you, Mayor. Just a point of clarification, since the workshop has taken place, there has been at least one update during city manager's remarks where schedule and plan for what's presented tonight was presented to the council. So, it has been on the table and in front of council's eyes since then. If the will of the council was to not bring it forward, there was opportunity to discuss it at that point as well.
Mr. Edgerton?
I have a question on the financial piece. I guess I was the only one that was here during the budget workshop earlier tonight. Sounds like it. But, I recall from the budget workshop that there's, you're proposing a $550,000 expenditure in the CIP.
Correct.
For the, for the DIF, for the repairs to the park, the upgrade, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is also park and trails DIF money, which I think, when you briefed us on it before, when we had either the February 5th presentation or another presentation subsequent to that, that there was about $1.8 million in that fund that has yet to have been expended on one dime on any park or rec function or planning for the future of parks and recs in this city. Five and a half years later, we finally got a proposal. We got direction, contrary to previous speaker, I don't care what the minutes reflect, the minutes are just a summary of what was discussed. If you go back and review the meeting of February 5th.
I did.
Clearly, direction was given to take a community-wide approach by this council. And so, my question to you is, is this money in the previous budget figure of $550,000, or is this on top of that?
This is in addition to that. This would be coming out of fiscal year 2013, 14.
Which is there.
Which is there. There's sufficient funding to fund this, as well as the improvements that are in next year's budget.
Okay, thank you. And then, so, $550,000, another quarter mil, so $750,000 approximately, that encumbers about 50% of that DIF, the funds that are in that DIF.
And we collect DIF, just about every day at this point, we're collecting DIF on the developments.
And it goes into the parks and trails.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So...
Mr. Furman?
I believe you must also take into, in the scope of work, I noticed that there's dozens of meetings, and staff is going to have to supply all the documents. So, you could have hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time involved in this process, which is going to throw another $100,000 into this report.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, this is staff's function, so they're getting paid to perform these duties. So, the materials associated with this and their time associated with this is not additional, it's currently being paid for.
You could certainly do something else with their staff time to move the city forward.
One of the things that I, you know, in recent memory, in recent meetings, maybe back to January through now, I'm somewhat dismayed at the lack of support from this council to staff's recommendations, going against staff reports, going against staff publicly on this dais, going against the planning commission's recommendations. You know, at some point, I guess, you all want to run the city and do all, and perform all the staff functions? I just, it's frustrating when we have a superior staff that's done all these good things, and we have, they're just not getting the support. I continue to be dismayed over this, and I need to share that with you tonight because I'm kind of tired of it. Is there a motion with respect to this agenda item? Mr. Furman?
Motion to deny.
Substitute motion.
Is there, is there a, the substitute motion for Mr. August?
I would like to make a motion that we put off the decision for the master plan for at least one year and give our people a chance to come in and review the problems, and then perhaps consider a master plan.
Is there a second on the substitute motion to table this agreement?
I'll say.
Roll call vote, please.
I want to speak to it.
Okay?
Well, a clarification, what is the motion on the floor?
The motion is to, as I understood it, maybe the city clerk could review it back, so I don't miss.
The substitute motion is to put off the decision for at least one year to give the commission time to review the issues.
That was made by Councilman August?
Yes, sir, and seconded by Councilmember Furman.
By Councilmember Furman. I want to respectfully, and I mean respectfully, disagree with the mayor regarding his interpretation of not supporting staff in regards to every policy matter. We are a board, like a corporate board, and our job is to set the policy, and at times we'll disagree with staff, and we should make our disagreements known. And that does not mean we do not, that does not mean we disrespect staff. If we didn't, if we didn't respect staff, you'd see some movement toward removing staff, and you don't see that. Mr. Johnson has very strong support on this council. My concern, when I looked at the agenda, it says 12.1, approve agreement with RGM Design Group for Parks, Trails, Open Space, and Recreation Master Plan. And then, 12.2, appoint Members of Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission. It seemed to me that this decision should be made subsequent to the appointment of the Trails Commission. That would be my only point. Let the Trails Commission, let the Parks Commission work on this. This is why they're being appointed. And part of the reason for this attempt to get a comprehensive plan is to get the community's input. Well, that's exactly why we're generating this commission. This commission is part of the community input, and we ought to get the community input first, I think, and that will subsequently be of great benefit when we do this project. So, I'm going to have to, with all respect to staff, I'm going to have to support the motion that's... motion that's on the floor, and I want to wait to see the kind of work this new commission, what they produce, before I would go any farther.
Mr. Lennox?
Should the council opt to approve this substitute motion, one of the caveats that I would put on the table is, once the commission goes to work, there should be some moderation of the pending list of improvements that come from their work. The diff funds obviously do get replenished each year, it's constantly gaining revenue from new developments that come in. However, the strategy behind spending those diff dollars is typically driven by a master plan, so my, my, the point in my statement is, we would want to make sure the commission understands their input needs to be collected into a, into its own master plan of sorts before spending should start, for fear of piecemealing out the expenditure and improvement of the park system. That's my recommendation.
Do we, do we need to, I don't think we need to include that in the, in the motion, we just take, take that, I take your word for that, Mr. Lennox.
Just a comment.
We have a substitute motion and a second on the floor, is there any other discussion about it? Would you restate the motion one more time, please?
Yes, sir. The substitute motion by Councilmember August was to put off the decision of a Parks, Trails, Open Space Master Plan Agreement for at least one year to give the commission time to review the issue.
Is that your motion, Mr. August?
Sure.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Denver?
No.
I'm sorry, did you have something else?
No, I think we'll let it go like that.
Okay. Councilmember Denver?
No.
Councilman, Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
No. Onto Agenda Item 12.2, appoint Members of Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission. Do we have a staff report here? This seems to be like, this is going to be our time to announce our picks, is it not? Is that the intention here?
It is, I would turn it over to Robert Lennox for a brief summary.
Yes, and I will keep it very brief. On April 16th, council adopted ordinance number 2014-143, adding Chapter 2.30 to the Menifee Municipal Code, providing for a Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission. Pursuant to the MADDY Act, staff posted the commission vacancies on, at City Hall, and news media, social media, and on the city website on April 23rd. Applications were accepted through May 21st, 2014, there were 15 applicants, or applications received. Staff requested the council, City Council consider appointing five new members at this meeting this evening, in preparation for the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission's first meeting on June 26, 2014. That concludes my report.
With that, how shall we proceed? You want to go, just go right down the line and announce who you're going to pick, or make any comments regarding this that you'd like?
Sure, I will, and this is Parks...
This is Parks, excuse me, Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission, not the Planning Commission.
Okay, my, my appointment is going to be Mr. Ken Gaunt from District 1, he's not here this evening, I'm not going to go into his credentials, his capabilities, or qualifications, everybody in the city knows Mr. Gaunt, so that would be my appointment.
All right, former county supervisor in another state. Mr. Furman?
John Baker.
Is Mr. Baker in the audience tonight?
No, he's not, he's working.
Mr. Denver?
Mr. Bill Zimmerman.
Congratulations, Mr. Zimmerman is in the audience, good evening. Mr., Deputy Mayor?
I'm going to appoint an esteemed gentleman from Menifee and a well-known rancher, Mr. Rick Croix.
And I am going to appoint a cohort of his from the Trails Committee, who did a lot of work with the GPAC and also the Trails Committee, and that will be Mr. Marty Rosen. Congratulations, one and all. Commissioners? Mr. Lennox?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I will be in contact with each of your appointees to confirm that first meeting date and post the first agenda 72 hours prior to that meeting.
All right, very well. Onto Agenda Item 12.3, appoint Members of the Senior Advisory Committee.
Could I make just a quick comment? I'd like to congratulate all of your new park commissioners. I'd also like to offer, offer an opportunity for me to help Robert introduce them to a process of organizing the commission by understanding the overall park system, and if I can be of any assistance in that initial process, I'd be happy to do so.
We'll make, we'll let that be a staff decision.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 12.3, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, very brief, on, again, on April 2nd, 2014, City Council adopted Resolution Number 14-362, establishing the Senior Advisory Committee, the purpose of the committee is to promote public service and community involvement with, for, and by seniors, review proposals for programs, projects, and facilities as they pertain to seniors, promote senior involvement in community events, programs, or volunteer projects, and act in advisory capacity to the City Council in all policy matters pertaining to seniors. Pursuant to the MADDY Act, staff posted the committee vacancies at City Council, and news media, social media, and on the city website on April 23rd, 2014. Applications were accepted through May 21st, 2014, seven applications were received by that deadline. Staff requested the City Council consider appointing five new members at this meeting in preparation for the Senior Advisory Committee's first meeting in June 2014. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox, and so, we went in one order last time, we're going to go in reverse order this time, and I'm going to start. I'm made good on a commitment to continue the relationship with Ms. Gloria Sanchez for this city and this capacity, it's something that she and I had talked about long before we ever formed the Senior Citizen Ad-Hoc Committee, which is now concluded, and so, to leverage her experience in her county appointment on the Senior Advisory Council for the county, as well as her work here in the city with our ad hoc committee, I want her to continue that role as my appointee to this committee, so I appoint Gloria Sanchez. Onto Mr. Edgerton?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you know, I, I had intended on appointing Mrs. Sanchez, and...
So was I. That's why I went first.
And, and I, I thank you for that. I'm, I'm going to have to hold mine off for a week, being one of the younger people on this council, I don't know that many seniors, so I will be making my appointment at the next council meeting.
Okay, very well, Mr. Denver?
Mr. Mayor, I had several choices, and there's some very fine choices, I wish I could have appointed more. I'd like to appoint my, my person would be Chuck Ruder.
All right, Mr. Ruder, Mr. Denver, congrats. Okay, down to Mr. Furman?
Victoria Arindine.
One more time on the last spelling, A-R. Aaron Dean. Is she here this evening?
No, she's not.
Is she at work? I'm just kidding. Mr. August?
First of all, I'd like to, I got several people that applied for it in, in District 1, and some of them are very well-known, and I just want to send out my appreciation for them volunteering, putting in an application for the position, and I know that, just because I may not have selected them, that their services and their experience will be welcomed by the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. I'd like to recognize those people for a minute, and we have Carol Sullivan sitting in the front row, we all know the fine work she does. There's a William Gray, and I tried to call him, and I haven't been able to contact. Don Coulter's in the audience tonight, and I expect you to participate in the group as well, Mr. Coulter. Chuck Ruder's on my list here, too. Eileen Parnell from District 1, she volunteered, I called her today, and we certainly all appreciate her, she was on the Senior Citizen Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee with Gloria Sanchez. My choice for the position is Kenny Wartek, he's sitting over there in the front row, he was a, a member of Gloria's, a member of the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Senior Citizens, and without your services and your experience, she couldn't have put together her survey program with the computers and all that. And Ken brings just a whole, huge list of accomplishments, I don't want to go into your degrees in college, but I do want to say that you've worked with the Janet, how do you pronounce that last name, Ken? G-O-E-S, G-O-E-S-K-E?
Geske.
Geske? Senior Citizen Foundation, you've also worked for Loma Linda Care Connection Van Services, Spouse Emergency Preparist Program in Sun Meadows, and also Resources Team Member in, Emergency Resource Team Member in 2012. So, thank you for the position, and I know you'll do a great job.
Well, I'm here tonight to vow that I will do all of my power to vindicate your choice of my abilities to complete the mission.
Okay, you better get, thank you, Ken.
Well, congratulations to one and all, and thank you for stepping up and volunteering to be considered and selected. It seems to me that the same people continue to step up to the plate and, and serve the community in several capacities, so we thank you all very much. Mr. Lennox?
Just one more thing, again, I will be in contact with each of the, the appointees that you've made this meet, this evening, to set up the meeting for the senior committee before the end of this month, in June, through the clerk's office, I'll, I'll need to get information for Victoria, Councilmember Furman's appointment, as there is no application on record for her, that's all.
I have it in the back of my truck. I can give it to you if, after the meeting.
I believe that concludes that agenda item, thank you, one and all. Onto Agenda, 12.4 was pulled at the beginning of the meeting, and we're on 12.5, introduce ordinance number 2014-150, adopting revision to Section 4.2.030B of the National Flood Insurance Program Participation Ordinance. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Jonathan Smith has a brief staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This item tonight is a correction of a date that was included in the original ordinance. FEMA contacted the Public Works Department, bringing to our attention the incorrect date that was given to us by FEMA, and they politely asked if we could correct it, and that's what's in front of you tonight.
Any questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to introduce.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 12.6, consideration of council-sponsored initiative measure to be submitted to the electorate and election to be consolidated with the November 20, with November 4, 2014 general election relating to the compensation of the mayor as requested by the council. Is there a staff report?
There's a very brief one, in that this has been before you, before. We originally brought this forward in conjunction with a four-year term for the mayor, and then we were directed to bring just the compensation issue back. What this will do, if the voters approve it, will, will provide for adjustment of the mayor's salary or stipend, in the same manner, basically, that the council members' stipends are amended. You may recall that the way that works is, you adopt an increase, it doesn't take effect until a new term occurs, and then it's limited to 5% per year. There's a statute that, that addresses that. With an elective mayor, you have the choice of establishing whatever salary you choose to, so long as it's, it's approved by the voters, and because the mayor structure has been approved by the voters. So, at this point, what we have provided at the direction of the council was that the mayor would be compensated at an amount of $100 more than whatever the compensation is for the other members of the council. So, that is what is provided here, it will be, we've got the materials to basically call for the election that will occur in November, that would make this then take effect, so that's where it is.
Do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Mr. Furman?
I'm, I'm definitely in favor of giving the mayor the raise, but the ballot measure is quite expensive, isn't it? Is there a, give me a rough cost on the ballot measure.
I, I really can't, because the register...
$113,000?
Oh, no, no, no. The entire election will be somewhere in the area of, my recollection is $100,000, give or take. The, the difference is, when you add a ballot measure on an already scheduled election that you're already holding, you've already got candidates on, it's printing costs that raise it. So, another several thousand, no doubt, not anything like if you were putting it on a special election.
Okay, I was only curious if there was one legal way that we could give them a raise without going that way. If there's not, why?
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid not, because the ballot measure that established the mayor was...
Good, I'll so move then.
Very specific.
We have a motion and a second?
Before we, yeah, I comment. There's no way we could solve the problem of a two-year versus four-year term with a, with an alternative motion, we call them substitute motion, is there, kill two birds with a stone? Is there a second for that? I, I, I just think it's a real pain in the neck to have to run every two years, and we all run every four years, I think it was an oversight, and maybe we could clean up the problem all at once. If not, I, I don't mind, if I can't get a second, we can go back to the motion.
Is there a second on that substitute motion at this juncture?
The, the difficulty with that is that that is not really before you this evening.
I see. I withdraw whatever it is I said.
Mr. Edgerton?
No, I'm certainly going to support the pay raise. I know, when I first got on the City Council in Long Beach, the mayor had a chauffeur-driven limousine, and one of the first actions, I was part of a new big sweep on the council, one of our first actions was to take away that chauffeur-driven limousine for the mayor. So, I would hope, Mr. Mayor, in supporting your $100 a month, you don't use that $100 to get yourself a chauffeur-driven limousine.
That's a tank, a tank and a half of gas in my Camry at today's prices. So, Mr. Furman?
I, this is just a question, I thought, I thought your, your pay was $8,000 a year.
It was, it is divided by, divided by 12, so it comes out to like 667 and some change.
What I'm saying is, I think, with the $8,000, you got more than $100 more than, more than us. Right? You were getting an extra $2,000 for the year.
No, you guys, what was your, your stipend was 500?
We get $6,000, you get $8,000.
Right, right, that's right.
So, you got more than $100,000, or more than $100 a month. You got $2,000 for the year, that's more than $100 a month.
He's talking about if there are automatic raises for the council, how does he keep up with that?
But, you should get $100 more than you're making now. You're actually taking a pay cut, is what I'm saying.
And right now, you guys, when the next election cycle rolls around, if this doesn't get corrected, you guys are, you guys will all be making $100 more than me, which goes against the voters.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, I might be, I'm in favor of giving you $150 a month more, because that's what the voters gave you last night.
I see your point, yeah.
They gave you $2,000 a year, that's $150, $166 of...
Well, I think the ordinance reads that the mayor is to continually get $100 or more than the council. He automatically gets that increase.
Well, it, it all works out in the end, you can just put $100 more than we make it.
But, what I'm saying is, the first time he's going to take a pay cut.
No, quite frankly, what will happen is, your pay raises will, you already approved them, they will take place, his salary will then be $100 more a month than yours, and that will be substantially more than...
Then, to make this, right, we'll get 600 a month?
I believe you're, I think it's higher than that, I think it's... I think it's 660. I don't recall now.
No, if you get 600, you get 700 a month.
He, he would get, if, if you get, I think you, I think it was 660. I, I may be wrong, because it's been a while since we did it.
If you're only getting $100 more, then you're only getting 800, $200.
Then his, his compensation would be 760 a month. So, that's how that would work.
It would be a pay cut if he took it right now, but it won't be a pay cut next year.
No, and he can't take it right now, because it can't be adjusted during the term.
Let me, let me get this perfectly clear. Next year, the council will be making 600, and he'll be making 700.
It's either 6 or 7, yeah, yeah.
Then he's taking a pay cut.
Uh.
Because he's making 660 now.
Well, I think you're, I think you guys are making more than that after the-
He's making 8,000 a year.
Excuse me, Mr. Furman. I, I think that, 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 that comes out as a formula. The council may be making 650, in which case he'll make 750.
Okay.
I think we're entitled to 650.
See what I mean, I was just trying to be fair.
In addition to which, of course, then in the next cycle, you would get, again, basically put in for the two 5% raises for each year.
In the proper cycle, then.
So, it would, it would be, you know, another 10% on that. But, basically, you're just setting up the structure so that it works that way.
Yeah.
It's good news, we can start a family.
You can almost pay for a ballot statement.
There you go. You can, you can adopt somebody from Vietnam.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Could you call a roll, please?
My question is much easier than the others. I do not know who made and seconded the motion.
Mr. Furman motioned, and Mr. Edgerton seconded.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Man.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Onto agenda item 12.7, consider ordinance for campaign reform as requested by the council. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. As requested by Councilmember Furman, we have prepared the Temecula ordinance for your adoption. That's the ordinance that you gave us at the end of the meeting. And just for your reference, there, there have been a number of communications as to what this actually means. It, it truly means very little, in that it makes no changes to candidate disclosure requirements at all. It does make a, a change with regard to committees, independent committees, that support local candidates in local races or local issues. So, if there is a, an independent committee is formed, or, or has to begin, has to file, if it receives more than $250 from any, any donor, and it, and if it expends more than $250. The confusion that I have seen in the communications is that there seems to have been an assumption that there was a limitation of $5,200 for any contribution from any individual, and that is not true at the local level. At the local level, there's no limitation on what you can accept from any donor. So, unlike statewide campaigns where the candidates are limited as to what they can accept, in a local election, you can accept as much as you want. The statewide limitation on independent committees arises because that's another way for candidates to get publicity if there's an independent committee. But, in a local election, there really isn't the need for that committee. Nevertheless, the change that it makes is that, that if a group brings in $250 or expends $250, it has to file the report that is due for that committee, the 460 forms, with the city clerk. Now, under state law, those forms need to be filed with the Secretary of State. This will require that for local elections only, that they will, that any independent committee will have to file with the city clerk, and the city clerk will keep those records and make them available to the public in the same way that your financial disclosures are, are submitted. That's the, that's all it does. That's the end of it.
What's an independent committee?
An independent committee is a committee that is not controlled by the candidate. That, let's say that one of your best friends knows that, golly gee, I'm going to vote for Mr. August, but he's, he's just, you know, doing his thing. He's taking money from whoever he chooses to take it from, and he's building his file. But, I want to, I want to make a special statement. I'm going to buy a billboard for him, I'm going to do all these various things. He now is a special committee for a local race, and he will have to file a, a report with the city clerk. The city clerk will keep that on file, and it's open then to the public. So, that's really the only change.
He's not running while you're doing it for Greg.
Well, he asked the question.
So, the, what I read in here somewhere, and I can't quite put my finger on it, does this then, as it's currently written, does this make the city clerk also the enforcement arm of that particular process, or would the FPPC still?
The FPPC would not, would not be involved, because this is not a, that, this is beyond their regulation. This would be, it wouldn't be necessarily the city clerk, probably would be code enforcement, I would imagine, because it would be a violation of the city's penalty provisions if you violate the, the rule.
Need the people to check up on me.
And so, I did a little bit of, not much, but I did some research with some of the previous agenda items that the FPPC had, and they're, and they've taken action on city, local municipal ordinances, because is there, is there a mechanism whereby we have to have this approved by the FPPC before we can implement it?
No, it does not have to be approved, so long as it applies only to local elections.
Okay. So, if we were to expand it to something outside of the lifeline, like a supervi, you know, I don't, couldn't imagine what it would be, but-
Well, you, you only have the authority to change it locally.
Yeah.
So, and you can make it more restrictive than what the, the state provisions are for local governments. But, that, that does bring it back to being locally enforced, because it's, it's not a violation of the FPPC rules, it's a violation of your municipal code.
Okay. Aye, yeah, those are my two questions. Mr. Denver?
What are the penalties? Imagine that a new person who was a councilman in Long Beach, and he had some independent committees, and he comes into Menifee and decides to run, but he doesn't know about these new rules, and he violates them, and we send code enforcement out with weapons. What, what happens to him?
Well, he would be in violation of the city's code, which is a misdemeanor or an infraction. And in a, in the case of somebody who innocently violated it, probably, because that is a criminal standard, that would probably not result in a prosecution. It also could be enforced administratively through a citation process. So, it, it, it kind, it brings it into all of the enforcement that the city, the enforcement powers that the city has for any violation of the code. So, and that's where it is. It specifically calls out that it is subject to the penalty provisions of the city.
Did I hear you say that it's very similar to a person who puts graffiti on his fence?
Yeah.
This is the dumbest thing I've heard in a week.
The, the, I, I had another, I had three questions, and I fired, forgot to ask the third one. It appears to me that the amounts that are in here, see, right now, if a candidate, if a candidate files papers with the city clerk's office to run for office in Menifee, if they, they don't have to make a report of a committee until they achieve a $1,000 donation or a $1,000 expenditure. That's what kicks it in. And it doesn't have to come from one donation, it's on the aggregate.
All right.
So, it could be 250, 250, 250, 250, but once you get to 1,000, then that, then you have to certify, you have to, it's a qualified committee at that point. So, what these amounts appear to do is lowers that threshold down to 100, if I'm reading the ordinance correct.
That, that is correct, yes. There, there is that lowering, you're right, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It, it still requires the same disclosure of anything-
Yeah, same disclosure, it just lowers the amount for when that mechanism happens.
That's correct.
Mr.-
Accumulation.
No. Well, yeah. Mr. Edgerton?
Just to follow up on Councilman Denver, I, I'm a little concerned. When people start running for a campaign, maybe even hypothetically, somebody could come from Long Beach and be quite experienced, but getting involved in a campaign, either in this community or another community, can really be confusing for, for new candidates. And I, I hate to see some mishap, all of a sudden they're slapped with a misdemeanor. That's, that strikes me as being too harsh. I, I, I've got, I've got a concern about that. I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Denver. I, I have, I have a problem.
What is this? You agree with me?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Yes, yes. Maybe it's because I don't understand.
I feel bitter now.
There are, you know, we did, we did provide you a rather extensive memo on other options and various things that can be done and so on. There are a variety of things that can be done that might be more productive than this particular ordinance, but this is the one that we were asked to bring back, so that we did.
Some of, some of what?
Okay. So, can I ask a question before you? I mean, I, the motion, the motion's recorded. So, just from the standpoint of mechanics, if this is introduced tonight and it's adopted at second reading, it becomes effective when?
30, 30 days. Oh, if we, oh, that's the other issue. We have, we have provided you with two forms. One is a regular ordinance. This is, I would even express some, some sympathy if you said this sounds like something that lawyers put together, because it is. We always recommend that when you do an urgency ordinance, that you also do a regular ordinance in case the urgency ordinance is challenged. And so, we have prepared for you two ordinances, one's an urgency ordinance and one is not, because the opening of the filing period for filing for council will come before the 30 days after the second reading of the regular ordinance will expire.
So, therefore, it wouldn't be applicable then to the November election?
It arguably wouldn't be, but on the other hand, the filing deadline is well after. So, in an abundance of caution, which is why you hire lawyers, however frustrating that may be, we have prepared a simultaneous processing here, so that you adopt an urgency ordinance now that goes into effect immediately, but you also adopt a regular ordinance that goes through the regular process in the event that there's any challenge to the urgency ordinance.
We need two motions?
You need two motions and two votes.
Back to back or together?
Well, separate. Separate.
Some move on, one.
Okay. Hold on here. Are you moving to introduce the urgency ordinance?
The urgency ordinance is not to be introduced, it's to be adopted.
I'm sorry, to adopt the, it's correct. The urgency ordinance, and do we have a second on that one?
Excuse me, just clarification on the ordinance. There's no cap on the amount of money here that one can receive at all.
None.
Other, other than we're likely to end up punishing some new candidates to a higher degree.
That's correct.
Because I, I mean, the, the impact, to me, is nothing. I mean, my, my committee for the November election is already qualified, and it's already been duly reported. So, I mean, I'm already in compliance with the ordinance that hasn't been adopted, in theory. So, it, it would apply to those who maybe have not come forward, or filed, pulled papers, or spent a dime, you know, so. All right, so there is a motion to adopt the urgency provision. Is there a second? Is there a second on the adoption of the urgency? Hearing none, that motion fails. Is there a motion on the standard ordinance?
Some of it.
Is there a second on this ordinance? Is there a second on this ordinance? Hearing none, that, or a motion also fails. At this juncture, that concludes the business on that particular agenda item. Onto, where am I at here? City Attorney Reports.
I have nothing further this evening.
City Manager Report?
Just have two items, Julie, if you could throw up that slide.
Yeah.
Wanted to celebrate with the council, the community, and the Public Works Department in the installation of the Sun City Community Menifee, next exit signs just north of McCall on the southbound side, and just north of Newport on the northbound side. Those signs are installed, you'll see those on the photos here. Congratulations to Mr. Smith and his staff. And if you could go to the next one, the northbound freeway-only lane over Newport, taking the hatched lane and adding a lane for more stacking and travel on eastbound Newport to northbound McCall, was done last night. Congratulations to Public Works and Rafael Martinez and Jonathan Smith, and that's the end of my report.
That's amazing. Mr. August?
I, when I, I was just told about that tonight. I haven't been out on the freeway for a while, so tomorrow I'll be, I'll be, I'll be driving north and south tomorrow for a while, take a look at those signs, so, and I appreciate that, everybody who did that.
You can stop along the freeway if you want to get a ticket. Thank you. You have to fake a flat tire. Hurry.
Are there future agenda requests from council members?
I would like to revive that consideration of minimum lot size, which is going to come up in any event, July or August, and I'd like it to come up in the next meeting, because I'll probably during discussion want to revise it a bit, with the understanding I'm not going to be asking for any votes at that time, rather than, I think the issue's really complicated. We just, we start talking about traffic, and we find that we've got D grades in our city of Menifee, which has nothing to do with our traffic engineer. It has to do with the county. The county has D and F roads. How do, how do we get in a situation where we find that the county is going to be imposing a lot of things on us that are, are going to really have a horrific impact on our city? And I just want to open the subject. It may be just more complex than lot size, and maybe we can reach, once again, some general agreement with the council that'll eventually end up in a workshop. I think that's probably what it's going to take, because we've got different people coming in different directions about what really generates revenue or what does not. So, I had had a second for Mr. Furman on that before. I just want to revise it to bring it back sooner rather than later.
And it's, if you would, I mean, if you concur, I mean, we've already, it's already been requested and seconded, really, it's just a matter of, it sounds to me like we wouldn't want to have that discussion with Mr. Leclerc not being here, so June 18th would be off. Are you okay with it in July? Or are you okay with it in July, consistent with the workload of the staff?
That's fine. That's fine, yeah.
So, I mean, give them the flexibility. I, I think it's a good discussion to have, and I know the, we've gotten some correspondence on some types of initiatives that we could discuss and enact down the road. I think your, I think your idea and your plan's good to have a discussion. I got, Mr., yeah, I got, yeah, go ahead.
I just, I wanted to- Excuse me, that's a time certain, and Mr. Leclerc comes back.
Yeah, when he gets back.
I just want to point out Parks, Trails, and Recreation appointments, I mentioned everybody else but Mr. Guidress. I wish there were six positions for Tom Guidress out there. He's participated in the past, he really wanted the job, and a town in the city would really be better off if they had six positions for you, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Denver?
I think I was supposed to bring up my idea of the military banners in Romaland at this point, rather than last. No, it's okay?
Yeah, it's all right. You got unanimous consent on that, for sure.
Okay.
I have nothing to add tonight. Long agenda again, but there's business to be done towards the end of the fiscal year, and June 18th, we have, we have, huh? Oh, yeah, thank you. Wow, appreciate you, thank you very much for that reminder. Okay. Had a couple discussions with a colleague, a couple colleagues on here, and as you know, the RFP for the city attorney has closed, and we have 12 respondents. And in order to get through those a little bit more efficiently, I am going to appoint a city attorney RFP review ad hoc committee, and that is going to consist of Deputy Mayor Edgerton and Councilmember August, with the goal of taking those 12 and reviewing those and bringing those back with some sort of recommendation on how to proceed or not proceed, and that is the task of that ad hoc.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
That's your order.
Yeah. All right, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, staff, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.